I'm Jessica Vaughn, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students, including children starting with our early learning programs and continuing with adults through our workforce programs.
I'm Karen Perez, the School Board's Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America and our team is made up of 24,000 people working at close to 250 sites across the county. Nuestro distrito es el séptimo más grande de los Estados Unidos y el tercero más grande del estado de Florida. Nuestro equipo está formado por 24 millones de personas que trabajan en cerca de 250 escuelas en todo el condado. Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 PM. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to meet or email any of our board members and follow our district on social media. School board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum 635 and Frontier Channel 32.
Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They are posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we are making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting of May 6, 2025 is called to order. Member Perez will now lead us in a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the month of May is Mental Health Month, we want to remind our students, teachers, staff, and families about the importance of prioritizing mental health and wellness as we transition into the summer season. Taking care of your mental well-being is just as important as caring for your physical health. Remember to practice self-care. That is why I'm leaving right after. Reach out for support when needed and prioritize activities that bring you joy and relaxation. Let's work together to create a supportive and understanding community that values mental health. Your well-being matters now and always. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Member Perez, will you now acknowledge our student entertainment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It'd be my pleasure. I would like to thank the PISO K-8 drum line along with Principal Ovette Wilson and Director Randall Griffin. These wonderful students entertained us prior to the start of our board meeting. And at this time, we would like to invite the students up to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Ari. I am in third grade and I play cymbal and bass drum.
Hi, my name is Jordan. I'm in fourth grade and I play snare. Clock that.
Hi, I'm Ava. I'm in fifth grade and I play quads and snare.
Hi, I'm Chloe and I'm in seventh grade. I play bass drum and quads.
Hi, my name is Isa. I'm in the fifth grade and I play snares, quad, and bass.
Hi, my name is Isabel. I'm in the fifth grade and I play cymbals and bass.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey. I'm in the fourth grade and I play the snare.
Hi, my name is Jaden and I'm in the fifth grade and I play the quad.
My name is Josiah and I'm in fourth grade and I play sneer and cymbal.
My name is Sophia and I'm in fourth grade and I play quads and bass drum.
My name is Lila. I'm in fourth grade and I play quad and bass.
Hello, my name is Randall Griffin and I am one of the music educators at PISO K-8. And I thank you guys for hosting us and allowing us to entertain you with our fantastic drum line.
And greetings, everyone. My name is Ovette Wilson. I'm the proud principal of PISO K-8, home of the Bulls. Where learning is our business. And if I haven't told you lately, never forget, there's greatness in you. Thank you.
Parents, you're welcome to come up and take some quick pictures if you'd like. All right, thank you. Great job. Fantastic. Okay, we have no withdrawn items today. I do need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Perez. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. We have one set of minutes to be approved today, April 22, 2025. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Washington and a second by Member Combs. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And we're waiting on... There we go. And the motion passes unanimously. Board members, I'll go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we are a nonpartisan board who believe all children can be empowered to learn and succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. To pave the way for efficient agenda statements and questions, board members will have five minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterward, the superintendent can respond, and if you have further questions, you're asked to get back in the queue. Member Perez will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, please allow me to quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed captioning on live webcast, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning on the online video archive.
Thank you. We have one item that is scheduled for time certain. 6:00 PM is employee and student input. This evening, I am pleased to announce that we will begin to incorporate student comments in addition to employee comments during the 6:00 PM designated time for our board meetings. Board members, during the last retreat, you supported my request to acknowledge student voices during our board meetings. I am very thankful for your support, and I know that you'll help champion our student voices. Tonight, we have members from the superintendent's advisory council in attendance, and I'd like to ask them to please stand and be recognized. Some of them will later speak in our meeting agenda and utilize the designated 6:00 PM time certain. And there you are. You may be seated. Thank you for joining us and for joining us all year long and being such a strong supporter and voice to our superintendent to keep him tied to our student voices. Now we'll move on to AO2, Recognition Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5 through the 9 of 2025, and National Teacher Day, which is May 6, 2025. Member Washington will highlight this recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And by the way, before I start, I'm going to put on my teacher appreciation cap. So I will be wearing this for the remainder of the meeting. Hillsborough County Public Schools recognizes Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5 through May 9. This board and our entire community recognizes and honors the extraordinary educators who serve our school with unwavering dedication, passion, and heart. We are proud to have more than 13,000 teachers in this district. Our teachers are the foundation of our district's success. They inspire curiosity, build confidence, and shape the future of every child who walks through their doors. This Teacher Appreciation Week, we express our deepest gratitude to our educators for their hard work and continued commitment to preparing our students for life. Thank you for every lesson taught, every student uplifted, and every moment spent in the making a difference in our students. And we love our teachers.
Thank you very much. We also now do a 101 recognition of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers Best Crew Award. Brian Ford, Chief Operating Officer, is here, and Anne Marie Courtney is here. And at this time, I would like to call up Anne Marie, Director of Partnership, Engagement, Philanthropy, and Outreach.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, cabinet members, and guests. The Bucs Best Crew Program, supported by our amazing partner, the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, recognizes standout Hillsborough County Public Schools teachers, administrators, and support staff for outstanding service, overall impact on students, and accomplishments beyond the classroom. We are honored to have Brian Ford, Chief Operating Officer of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, here tonight to announce this month's award recipients.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you, Anne Marie, and good afternoon, Board, Superintendent, and everybody in attendance. And I got to get me one of those hats. Proud to be here on Teacher Appreciation Day, and that's what this program, our Bucs Crew Award, as you know, is all about, is recognizing those that go over and above. And we have a tradition at One Buck, anybody that goes over and above gets a game ball. And the individuals I'm about to read today that have joined us have definitely gone over and above, and some of them are near and dear and have special meaning here to all of us. I'd like to bring up Principal Alvarez and Coach Perez. Why don't you come up and join me? And we have a Buccaneer fan, a couple fans in the house here. I like his pin. I wonder where he got that? And this young lady right here. Congratulations. So first, again, good afternoon and welcome. I got to tell you, this is one of my favorite days every month, so thank you for the opportunity to come and celebrate the success of such deserving individuals. Principal Alvarez, this comes from your peers, these talking points. And when I read these, I know we've met in the past, and just unbelievable, the passion that you have for our students and their families. But our first award goes to Principal Alvarez of Pierce Middle School. And again, this is from your peers, your teachers, your student body, their parents, and people that know you've added to this. But your commitment to the school community goes far beyond what's expected, demonstrating an unwavering passion for those you serve. You're constantly arriving early and staying late. First in, last out is what I've heard. So I kind of have that same schedule. But offering your support for outside-of-school activities, which is very meaningful and important to the student body, ensuring that your students always have the resources that they need. However, it's day-to-day actions that often go unnoticed that truly highlight your dedication. In a school that faces many behavioral challenges, you work tirelessly to foster an environment of growth, respect, and learning. Your quality invested in your colleagues, whether it's covering a class, offering extra planning time, or providing a listening ear, your genuine care for the well-being of your peers has made a profound impact on the school's environment. It's been described as you having a presence that is a beacon of love and support. It says a lot. And creating a positive ripple effect throughout Pierce Middle School. And for that, you kind of embody the whole nature of this Bucs Crew Award. So with that, I have a certificate. And again, everybody that goes over and above gets a game ball. Yay. When I saw the nominee for this month's Teacher of the Award, it kind of hit home to me because this young lady actually taught both of my sons when they were at Walker Middle School just a few years ago. So I recognized the name, and I also knew how big a Buck fan she was. And I never expected she'd come in full jersey, but unbelievable. So our second award goes to PE teacher Selena Perez at Smith Middle School. Coach Perez is an integral part of the school community and beyond. Again, this is coming from your peers, your principal, the student body, and the faculty, as well as the community of Smith Middle. You're not only an incredible teacher, but your dedication extends to those families and staff in need. Out of the goodness of your heart, you manage donations and provide a food pantry for families to access on a year-round basis, including holidays and even those affected by the past hurricanes. I was not surprised when I heard all of this. She also organizes a Hoops for Heart, and I remember this, benefiting the Heart Association. And as a board member on CEOs Against Cancer with the Heart Association, it goes a long way. Students absolutely love participating in this basketball tournaments throughout the day, and because of the event's success, you're constantly been one of the highest donors in the state. That's philanthropic through and through. On top of that, Coach Perez takes on the role of the chef for the annual, and I love this, Friendsgiving Lunch for all staff before the Thanksgiving break. Your efforts ensure that the support programs for families and staff succeed, and your love for the community is evident in everything that you do. And again, your support of our organization. So on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, thanks. And if anybody I know deserves a game ball. And when I heard about this, I'm like, oh my, I definitely, we got to do this last because this individual is among us, and she supports all of us, but especially that young man over there. And speaking on behalf of who assists me on a day-to-day basis, I wouldn't know where I am, and Superintendent Ayers and I share that. So the next award goes for Marietta Johnson. 21 years and getting ready to retire. Since April of 2004, Ms. Johnson has built a strong legacy at the Hillsborough County Public Schools, marked by professionalism, humor, and fierce loyalty. She has been a steady and inspiring presence in every position that she's held in the district over her 21 years. She began her career as a Secretary One at Freedom High School, becoming the data processor within a little over a year, and in 2009, she was promoted to the Principal's Secretary. She was selected for the position of Executive Secretary due to her vast knowledge of the school operations, and in this role, she supported the principal secretaries from dozens of schools, much like a coach strengthens his players with a strong playbook. I like that. Her ability to analyze situations with parents and community stakeholders, as well as being a strong problem solver, is a great asset to those she interacts with on a daily basis. Her extreme attention to detail and hard work ethic got her noticed by the leadership at the district office, and she again was promoted to the Senior Administrative Secretary for the chief of schools. Her intuition in handling difficult situations is spot-on, and she remains cool under pressure. I've heard that. While working in the administrative district office, Ms. Johnson quickly became known as the go-to person for her extensive knowledge of district policies, procedures, guidelines, and formatting, internal and external communications, and basically general district operations. It was no surprise to many who know and work with Ms. Johnson when she was chosen to fill the Superintendent's Secretary position for the past five years. As she prepares for retirement, Ms. Johnson continues to be a role model for dedication and dependability that inspires our entire team. So congratulations. Much deserved, and thank you for all that you've done for our community. Again, on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much for your partnership, and thank you for all the winners tonight, for your service to Hillsborough County and to our students and for all that you do. All right, now we're going to move on to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive responses to your comments, our staff will follow up and keep the board informed about the responses. Our board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. However, it is requested that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally at a board member or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting will not be allowed as our civility policy is in place. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. This afternoon, each speaker will have three minutes. Reminder that your three minutes start when you begin speaking. When there are 30 seconds left, you'll see a yellow light on the lectern and a red light, and then a chime will indicate when your time is up. I'll now call up the first five speakers.
Mike Plor here again to talk about the total disaster that CTE leadership created with our industry certification program. Everything I told you about this issue came true. Paperwork increased a hundredfold and was impossible to process. Teachers did not participate. Total certifications tanked. Millions of dollars worth of state funding, gone. Didn't happen. Now taxpayers, Hillsborough County taxpayers get to make up that difference. School grade will go down due to missing acceleration points, not just this year, but for three years to come. District grades going to go down. Graduation rates are going to fall as students didn't have access to getting replacement courses through industry certification for their math and science credits. Thousands of disenfranchised students never got the chance to participate because CTE leadership enacted an Alabama poll test to limit participation. Why are we still talking about this? Negligence, mismanagement, fraudulent misappropriation of funds, liable decision-making. Even now, CTE leadership are convinced themselves that they're totally incompetent at doing their jobs. To fix the issue of not being able to support teachers with industry certification testing vouchers and to unwind the crash-and-burn industry certification policy from this year, their solution? Make each school responsible for doing it on their own. Everything, purchasing, inventory, literally do nothing to Everything, purchasing, inventory, literally do nothing to fix it, do nothing to support the mechanism to increase participation, do nothing to meet the goal of Test One, Test Them All. Even worse, it's fiscally irresponsible. Any economy of scale from making large district-wide purchases will be lost when teachers struggle to provide excellent teaching while doing the work that CTE leadership's supposed to do. CTE leadership is certain that any and every teacher is more competent than themselves to perform the contracting and purchasing, but again, why do we have to do it? Moreover, schools are being told to add personnel at the site level or use T-payrolls to make up for the CTE leadership throwing their workload over the wall onto the teachers. Adding $10,000 to $20,000 in additional staffing costs to every school. Even more amazing, CTE leadership intends to keep 20% of the state funds from industry certification, even while not doing the work. Middleton High School has over $1 million worth of funding. We would like to have a conversation with you. We'll be holding that funding paperwork until that occurs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Krista Cashin, and I'm here to discuss the cutting of orchestra at Rogers Middle School. First, I'd like to take a quick moment to talk about the kind of student that orchestra attracts. They tend to be different. They tend to be cerebral. They tend to be introverted. They tend to think deeply and feel intensely, and they might not always show it on the outside. They likely don't push their way forward or demand to be seen, and if they do, it's not in the same way as other kids. And it might seem like I'm standing up here generalizing to you, but there's real data behind what I'm saying. In 2011, a study published in Applications of Research in Music Education found that orchestra students tend to pervert introversion significantly more than students in choir or band, and significantly more again relative to the average population of all students. Additional research shows that kids who want to be in orchestra score higher in traits tied to sensitivity, intellectual curiosity, and reflection. In short, orchestra tends to draw the cerebral inward-focused student, the one who thrives in structured, thoughtful, emotionally rich, and safe environments. Here's what's often overlooked with those sensitive kids. They may be more vulnerable. Research from the National Institute of Health and the American Psychological Association shows that students who tend toward introversion, high sensitivity, and conscientiousness, like these orchestra students do, are more likely to experience anxiety, isolation, depression, especially in socially intense school environments where drama and chaos can be crippling to them. They're more likely to be overlooked, not because they aren't bright, but because they aren't loud. Orchestra may be one of the only places that meets the emotional and psychological needs of these quiet, brilliant rays of light. It offers belonging without pressure to perform socially. It's both an individual effort and a team sport in a way that many of these kids can't experience otherwise. It gives them a voice, even if they're not the ones shouting. If we take orchestra away at Rogers, where do these students go? What other space offers them the same sense of safety, identity, and purpose? There isn't one. We invest in so many programs for extroverted, competitive, socially-driven program, socially-driven students, and that's important. Those are necessary. But we can't forget the quiet ones. To them, it's not just an extracurricular nice-to-have, it's a refuge from the storm. My daughter plays double bass at Rogers, and this past school year, I've seen her and her peers put their entire hearts into it. This was the first time in 20 years Rogers got full superiors at MPA. They gave everything they have, and it's gonna be taken away. So please help us and those children by advocating for it at Rogers. That's what I ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I am one of your second-grade students. Thank you for summer language program. I'm excited to go. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. My favorite teacher ever was Ms. H. She taught me how to read. My school has a great library. My favorite thing to read is Dogman by Dave Poki. My mom always knows what books I am reading. My family loves books. Our family is against book bans. Did you know that book banning is not only when books are against the law to have at home? The Center for Free Speech and Encyclopedia both say that book banning is also when you take away books from public schools or public libraries because you do not like what the books say. This happened to Captain Underpants, which is also written by Dave Poki. My mom says some books are not for me. If my mom doesn't want me to read Captain Underpants or another book, she will tell my librarian. Bookmans don't keep me safe when my mom does. Thank you for our great library, and thank you to Ms. H. for teaching me how to read. I hope you all have a great day.
Hi, I'm his mom. Some people would probably say that me having him speak today is some sort of indoctrination, but at his age, I was reciting some pretty gruesome parts from the Bible in front of my whole school, so. And double standards are actually what I'm here to talk about today, again. I want you to keep me in mind before we have our next inevitable book challenge meeting because comments made by some of you at last year's meeting about identical do not sit right with me as a parent. One of you condescended to your materials review committee because you didn't like that they said in their feedback, I think, I feel. And then two of you appealed to the authority of the MPAA wanting a book rating system the same as for movies, as if this would help us parents. Do you know how the MPAA rating system was decided on? Do you know what the standards are for ratings? Do you know who is on the review boards? Do you know what their qualifications are? What process is there to prevent bias in their ratings? Do you know who Joan Graves is? If you don't know these answers, I don't know why you would want a rating system in place for books that mimics one that you don't know the mechanics of. Why are we appealing to the authority of a group of people we don't know for a system we don't understand? Do you know how many G-rated movies I don't let my kids watch? Birds of Terror, Bithia, Homeward Bound? The rating systems are not designed to parent for me. They don't utilize a list of things that my specific kid needs to avoid. It's my responsibility to choose on a case-by-case basis what my kids consume, not rely on some system that I don't fully understand. You said if identical were a movie, it would be rated R and therefore not okay for your students, but you don't apply that standard to every book. This is biased, just as the review committee that was dogged out was alleged of being. You leave books on the shelves that are graphic because the same libraries that carry identical carry the Bible, and the crucifixion in Matthew was made into a movie, The Passion of the Christ, which is rated R. And if someone were to challenge the Bible, you wouldn't be making that same argument. Again, the double standards do not make my kids safer, and I'm sure you don't care, but the MPAA has a track record of labeling queer movies higher age ratings just for being queer, when the same content, but straight, gets a lower rating. The exact same issues of bias and bigotry we see in MPAA ratings would end up in a book rating system, and I don't want that implemented here in Hillsborough for my kids. It's not gonna help me. We already see this from book banners elsewhere, Lakley County's book banner saying that he wants a book called The Last Quintista, which is a great book. Ban from schools because a side character has two moms. In Escambia County, there's a long battle over Tango Makes Three, a book about penguins. And in Michigan, a school banned Captain Underpants because the principal in the series happens to have a husband. Parents have told you what we need help with, and while we have special call meetings over books that hardly any kids read, where I have to hear bad faith arguments that my eight-year-old can dismantle, we call these bad faith arguments advocating for kids, and we call them parental rights in education, but I don't need a book rating system. I need you to do things like allow student comments. That's a good idea. I need ESY dates approved for my kids. That's what I need. I don't need a book rating system, and I don't need people who aren't public schools' parents being allowed to make instances where we have special call meetings. I need ESE support. Thanks.
Can I, can I please call up speakers 10, six through 10? Please line up speakers six through 10. And next speaker, please.
Mark Luther Largo. It's just next speaker. It's not an "and" next speaker. And your civility thing is not. Here is the ruling from the 11th Circuit. Lawyer, are you listening? Don't you pay attention? You can't have that civility rule. It does not work. Can you read this? Duh. There isn't such a thing. Here's 50 states, 50 fixes. Notice the color here. All white, not brown brick. It makes me think of when my wife, retired teacher, took her parents to the strawberry festival, rode past Blake High School, and her father said, "Oh, is that a prison over there?" That's what that appeared to him to be. Oh, yeah. And here's from the US and A Today from Ontario, California. This medical center has set a new standard with this micro, renewable microgrid, the largest in the country. So unlike what Tico did over at the airport, they did solar there, but they fed all that into the grid. Instead of using that solar right there at the airport, and you have the line losses. Now, let's not forget about Governor DeFure and the Republicans and what he wants to do, taking us back to the Gilded Age and having the childrens working in the fields, the mines, and you're going to see them dropping out of school.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
11th Circuit ruling.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mia Tokamori, and these are my groupmates Ezra Mesker and Lola Park. We are doing our McFarland Park IB fifth-grade exhibition project. Our topic is gender equality in leadership positions. As part of our action, we're here to present why it is important to have a diverse staff. The topic of this presentation is gender equality in leadership roles. Our central idea is gender equality empowers equal opportunities and access to leadership positions to create an inclusive community.
As a part of our project, we came up with three lines of inquiry. These are three different things we researched. They're all equally important, being the effects of gender inequality on leadership positions, forms of gender inequality, and ways to promote gender equality. According to the Education Information and Accountability Services, the percentages of male and female elementary school teachers in Hillsborough County are 10.21% being male teachers and 89.79% being female. That shows that there are a lot more female teachers than male. It is extremely important to have a diverse staff and to give everyone equal opportunities because women and men should not be stopped from pursuing their dream just because of their gender. Women should be able to be in leadership positions, and men should be able to be teachers. Our hope is that you try and fix these gender bias problems. If you could find a way to get more women on leadership roles and more men as teachers, you will be taking steps towards gender equality. So we hope you follow our advice, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Julia Jackson, as a concerned citizen and 20-years educator Hillsborough County Schools, and a son that was a schoolteacher, well, still is. Due to not enforcing the MOA that has clearly been validated once again, now we have other organizations that are meeting on the property again. We have Martha Stevens, who is currently an active member of the NAACP, who holds the City Women Union Meeting that is now currently meeting at Gary Adult School. Once again, a taxpayer expense. While we are still talking about this, we wish we would get together once again and end this. What's Really Happening, hosted by Michelle B. Patti, a nonprofit group, had a call-in on Saturday with someone asking with their group, would they be able to meet on the campus with their kids to help with what's going on in their projects as well without any expenses? So here we are without the fees. The MOA needs to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Can speakers 11 through 15 please line up? And I'll call up the next speaker, please. Thank you.
I'm John Green. NAACP. The NAACP allows organizations such as the one that I belong to to use rooms at no cost. When planning for such events or as we gather to put together those Thanksgiving baskets for those kids' families, or bonding together as a unit during our stroll practices, we need a large enough space to be able to do the work that we do. We are able to save on those rental fees for large gathering spaces. That money that we, that would go towards rental fees can now be redistributed back into the community projects so that we can continue to do our work. Another activity that is a more by having partnerships with organizations such as the NAACP. The NAACP allows organizations such as the one that I belong to to use rooms at no cost. Violation one. What you looking at is my communication with the school board from April 14th with a public request. They respond back to me, I respond back to them with the information that I needed, still haven't gotten it. I know the sunshine law. I know it. And I heard bias, I heard transparency. Got some young African-American guys back here. NAACP is meeting for free on your property, supposedly doing partnership. Not one time in the two months that I've been down here have they brought anything. I request for the organizations who's meeting out there, right? And all the school boards can tell me is that it's in process. This is, somebody's not being transparent. Somebody is lying about something, right? Because it should be easy based upon Article Five, record-keeping, that you should be able to produce this with no problem whatsoever, right? All we doing, all we asking for is in the African-American community is for a voice, right? Now for you, for this to continue to happen, not having a voice, we got kids back here. You heard young kids up here today. What can they do? They can't come down here. The only people that you heard coming down here talking about African-American males is free space, how much they need the free space. They're not bringing no kids. They're not bringing no kids down here showing the partnership and what they doing. Yeah, the organizations do their own thing outside of that, but there's no transparency. Somebody is lying. And the school district is held responsible. How many kids is being mistreated and their parents go to these schools and the stuff is thrown under the carpet? They gotta stop. Just do the right thing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Virginia Berrien, and I'm a retired educator for the Hillsborough County School District for over 34 years. I've worked also with the NAACP AEXO organization. And when my kids were smaller, I even worked with AEXO then recruiting kids in the high school area. And I stopped when there were some issues going on a few years ago, and then I started back in 2023 when I retired. I had all this time that I wanted to get busy doing stuff in the community. So I went back working with AEXO, recruiting kids from high school in various areas and even private sector, high schoolers, and recruited kids to participate in AEXO. When it was time to go to AEXO to national, I was told that the school board won't allow you to go because you are not an employee of the school district. My concern is I've worked in previous years recruiting kids, and when it was time to go to AEXO, I went as a chaperone, meaning watching the kids that I've recruited to participate with them. And my concern is why, after working for the school district for 34 years, I was fit to be with kids? And then retired now, I'm recruiting kids, doing the same thing, but I'm not allowed to go because I'm not a school board employee anymore. So my question today is if this was told to the NAACP president, if it was, and I would like to know why it was told. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board members, and Superintendent. My name is Chris Maloney. I'm from Brandon, Florida. I'm the parent of three HCPS students, including a 7th grade student at Rogers Middle Magnet in Riverview named Matthew. Recently, we received the devastating news that the Rogers Orchestra program is being cut. My request here today is simple. Whatever budgetary difficulties the district is facing, I and many other members of this important community, we implore you to search elsewhere for savings. Music is an imperative part of both education and life. Study after study has shown that students who study music perform better, both academically and socially, which should be reason enough to ensure financial support of this program at our school. But beyond that, our orchestra is a place where self-esteem and confidence are fostered in students who may not have high confidence in other areas. Matthew is the concert master of the orchestra. He's also an honor student, member of the chess club, treasurer of NJHS, and was on the track team this year. And though he has much to be proud of, his heart is with the orchestra. It is in this class, under Ms. Kelly Montero's guidance, that he's been given leadership opportunities and as a result has become more self-disciplined, more self-directed, and more self-assured. What a wonderful transformation to witness at an age when so many of his peers are consumed with self-doubt. What Ms. Montero has accomplished in her first year at the helm of this program is remarkable, and a great credit to her as an educator. The program has more than doubled in size and continues to grow. The group of students that performed at MPAs received straight superiors, an accomplishment shared by fewer than 10 middle schools in the entire district, and a success that Rogers Orchestra had not experienced in more than 20 years. She has gone above and beyond in every regard, and her tangible success is a direct result of this tenacity. To lose an educator of this caliber from our school would be tragic. I wish to impress upon you and administrators at every level that orchestra programs are vital part of any school our size, and that our program specifically is growing and a thriving entity, bringing knowledge, confidence, and joy to our students. Please do not allow financial challenges to have such an adverse impact on these children. Please follow up on this and exert your influence. If the Rogers Middle Magnet Orchestra is eliminated, then one of Hillsborough County's treasures will in all likelihood be silenced permanently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Bishop Michelle B. Patti. Today I stand here kind of happy and a little sad, but at the last board meeting, there was a young man who parents brought him to the board meeting, and they couldn't bring him tonight, so he called and asked if he could come because he was shocked to hear misinformation that was given out. He was shocked to see that documentation was given, and because he's been taught as a child that you're supposed to not go along with wrong, you're supposed to speak up when things is incorrect. But here he have grown people sitting here saying things that was not correct, such as that there was no violation of the MOA with the NAACP. And we know that that is not true. I've given you time and time the information, but also I don't know if the board is aware, but there was a meeting here at this property with one of your attorneys. This is Ms. Noreen Copeland Miller, who was violated because she was had handicap. We were locked out of the meeting at NAACP. And so what she did, she filed a complaint about discrimination against handicap. Your attorney met with us, we did not accept what they was offering, and if they were, why would they offer something if they didn't feel like it was a violation? And I think that's when the lawyer let y'all know it was a violation. Perhaps the board didn't know, but I'm pretty sure the superintendent knew. Now I've been requesting information, could not get it until today, a few hours before this board meeting. Finally, with the help of a board member, I kept asking, we're not getting information that we're requesting. This came in today, just before I came, and it shows that out-of-school suspension, it shows that last year, 5,323 African-Americans were suspended, then this year, 2,923 that were suspended. And it looks really good when you look at the next page, it say Black Step was in ATX Program 192, and then we go to 2,597. However, what took place, you all just playing a shell game, the children went from being suspended out of school to going to the alternative program. The alternative program is parents cannot get their children to those programs. How many actually fall through on the eternity? So what has happened is the NAACP is cosigning on our children still being suspended, still being put out of school, and that's why you all allowing them to be on that property for free so that the parents do not have a voice, that this community, and that's a civil rights organization, it's not a organization that's doing this and that. It's a civil rights organization, it's a conflict of interest, and it never should have been introduced the first to start with, but you all are still, we are rather change your own thing than to do what's right. Please do what's right.
Thank you. Board members, I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Gray. Please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously with Member Perez not being here. I will now call on Superintendent Ayers to highlight our administrative appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. On the consent agenda this evening, we had two principal appointments, and I'd like to highlight those at this time. Our first is the new principal at Durant High School, and our new principal of Durant High School is Thomas Snyder. Thomas, if you could come on up, make your way up front here, please. Come on up. So Mr. Snyder, our new principal of Durant. So just his career a little bit, in 2004, Mr. Snyder began his career with HCPS as a teacher at Riverview High School. In 2014, he was named assistant principal at Alonzo. 2015, he then transitioned to Bloomingdale High School. 2022, Mr. Snyder was appointed assistant principal for curriculum at Bloomingdale, where he currently serves. Mr. Thomas Snyder, the new principal of Durant High School. Any family and friends also with Thomas, come on, stand up. I do want to acknowledge as well, we have Marcos Rodriguez, the principal of Bloomingdale. Marcos, I think this is your what, fourth APC, this third has gone to principal? So you must be doing something right over there at Bloomingdale. So thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for your service as well. Mr. Snyder, congratulations. All right. And our second appointment, as you look on the screen there, is Ms. Brandy Anderson, who is the new principal at Seminole Heights Elementary. Brandy, if you could make your way up here to the front, please. All right. So Ms. Anderson started her career with Hillsborough County Public Schools in 2007 and taught at Ippolito, Clark, Heritage, and PISO Elementary. 2017, she was appointed assistant principal at Kahoon Elementary, and then at Woodson K8. 2019, transitioned to AP at Shore Elementary. And in 2022, Ms. Anderson was appointed assistant principal at Heritage Elementary, where she currently serves. Brandy Anderson, our new principal at Seminole Heights Elementary. Congratulations. Any family and friends here with Brandy as well? Stand up. If you want to come up for a picture, come get a picture, it's a proud moment here. Come on up.
Look how cute.
Oh, look how cute, yeah. Ms. Anderson, I don't know if we like that dolphin shirt, though. Okay. Madam Chair, those are our two principal appointments today.
All right. Well, thank you. Congratulations, new principals. We'll now pause for just a moment for anyone who'd like to exit the boardroom. The following items will now be heard, C201, C402, C601, C707, and C101. The first one, 201, purchase of workstation on wheels, wow, from KB Port LLC. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these, KB Port, these are the workstation on wheels. They'll provide our students with real-world training on medical equipment that is being used in hospitals around the Tampa Bay area and beyond. And these are, this is a workforce purchase, and this is for Erwin Technical College for their, for the nursing program. So this item here is for Erwin Technical College, the nursing program. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Faber is here as well, of course, Mr. Murillo. Any questions regarding 201, which is the purchase of these workstation on wheels?
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C201. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Gray. Dr. Han and Member Gray pulled these items. Do you have a question or a comment? Dr. Han, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Chair Von. Actually, my questions were answered, but I'll just say them out in public record. I asked about the two-year warranty, I asked about the warranty, and I was told that it was a two-year warranty, but it could be extended. So I'd imagine if it was at a cost that would come back to the board, if it was extended. And then I had also asked about the subscription because they had said in the contract that the first year, the trial subscription is free, but I was told, and I asked what the cost of that would be moving forward, but I was told that we would not be using the subscription. So that was kind of a moving forward, we wouldn't have a need to purchase it. Is that correct? Okay. So those are my questions, and they were answered. But I put them in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the more advanced technology for health, safety, and I also have noted that there's a few, and I don't know if Ms. Davis is in the field here, but we have a few House bills that have revolved around diabetes management. When we have the statistics of 50% of our students are diabetic, obese, or obese, or asthmatic, we definitely have a lot of our children that are in dire need for nurse care. I think my question was, and I don't see Ms. Davis, but the House bill, you may want to elaborate on the diabetes bill, management bill. I have, let's see, I have 597, and is she able to talk?
Give us just, give us an opportunity, I can address maybe some of the questions and Superintendent Combs, while she just, I think she's just trying to research right now that particular bill.
Oh, yeah. I'm just very appreciative, you know, from a health standpoint, that we have Florida legislators that are absolutely cognizant and are doing the, they're helping. But you know what, you know, getting back to Mr. Warren Brooks, what do you think about this? Is it going to be a good, you know, a really good management system on top of it? And what do you think about the Florida, the legislation impacting possibly the safety?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not an expert on the legislation, I'll be honest with you, but one of the things that we have to admit is really since COVID, the state of Florida has really heavily invested in workforce education and adult technical education. And so with that investment, we really have tried to upgrade our facilities, and we've made a real commitment to try to make sure that when our kids are going out on clinicals, they're seeing real-world equipment, real-world things. And so this item came about from some of our nurses that were going out and said they saw a gap between what we were providing as education facility and what they were seeing in their clinical spaces. And they came back and said, this is really something that we think would benefit our students for them to see, to know how it works. Now, no, you know, we're not going to be taking student data and dispensing real pills and doing all that. It's really just a simulation. But for them to understand how that works and how they use that on the day-to-day, I think is something that will really benefit our kids, and it was something our nurses really came to leadership and requested. And so the state had put out pipeline funds to upgrade equipment, and this was a perfect example to tie into the curriculum that they were using.
Yes, and I know Dr. Ross is extremely appreciative, and I want to thank you also for funding and finding this to be, you know, very, very important for our nurses. So without further questions, unless we want to learn about the House bill, but perhaps not, yep, yes, here comes Ms. Kristin Davis. You know, Ms. Davis, we're tied so much in close relationships with our Florida legislative, and it's always good to hear when they are really promoting safety for our children. Can you just expand?
Thank you. Thank you, Member Gray and Board members. So really, this just, what Member Gray is referring to is a bill that expands the school district's ability to acquire some of the medicines and to distribute them, to add, tighten up language around storing and maintaining the medicines. So there's not too many, I mean, there's requirements, but it just expands the authority of a school and school district in terms of this, you know, these prescriptions.
Of diabetes management?
Yes.
Yes. Well, thank you.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarification, and it's my understanding that these cards are going to be used by our students within our certificate-based programs to be utilized going out into our hospitals and those base programs. These are not going to be used by our school-based nurses, am I correct?
No, ma'am. These are just, they're real, but we will use them as simulators because we want our kids just simulating what would happen. It will not be used by school nurses. These are our student, students that want to be nurses. Sorry if that clarifies that.
Yeah, yeah, I guess our nursing assistants in all of our certificate-based programs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That was just one clarification, just so I was sure that we're the same thing. And then I want to go back to Dr. Han's question about the subscriptions. I see that we have the trial subscription and that it's an unlimited license, so once So once the, the subscription is put in place into the device, we don't have to renew it because it's unlimited. Is that correct?
We basically get a SIM card that has some fake data.
Okay.
Fake patient data, I'm sorry. And so that's what we would use as we go around to teach and do everything with. So we won't be actually, if we were a real hospital, yes, we would buy that, and we would store student data, or, sorry, we would store patient data and everything in there like the real world. We're not doing that. We're not keeping patient data. We're not doing that. We're just going to be using the simulation. So that's why we...
Basically like a sandbox.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Hundred percent. Great example.
Yeah. So, so, okay. I just wanted to clarify why we would even have it. But I think that's why I want to make sure, clarify. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Seeing there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to 402, Negotiated Transformation Network Memorandum of Understanding with Hillsborough Classroom Teachers Association and Employee Financial Incentives for the 25-26 school year. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, you're familiar with this item. This has come before you in the past. This is for next school year. So I'm just going to kind of highlight this MOU for what it brings forward for the 25-26 school year. Before I do, though, I do want to acknowledge Ms. McCray, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Brown, Ms. Shotwell from our HR team, and of course, our Classroom Teachers Association as we work through this MOU to get it to this point today. So thanks to my team, Rob, Ms. Wegman as well, Mr. Creed, Ms. Wegman, in getting this to the finish line here today. So what this MOU does is it awards a bonus to incentivize and recruit top talent to our identified TN schools for the additional responsibilities and expectations required for student success at our lowest-performing schools. Eligible employees will be awarded the following bonus. So here's the bonus. Instructional is $5,000 annually. Our paraprofessionals, $1,000 annually. Assistant principals, $5,000 annually, and principals, $7,500 annually. This additional payment will be at a maximum of $5,000 for instructional or any state-awarded bonus payment, whichever is greater. Eligible employees are only eligible to receive either the state or district bonus payment, not both. Schools included have been identified as fragile using past school grades as well as our progress monitoring data projecting school grades for the 24-25 school year. So, Madam Chair, that is, that is 402. Again, our Transformation Network MOU with our Classroom Teachers Association for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C-402. I have a motion by Member Combs, and a second by Member Washington. Member Combs, Member Gray, and I all pulled this item. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. Thank you so much, Superintendent and the Cabinet. I think, you know, making sure that our transformation schools are paid more is very important. I know for myself, I worked in two transformation schools, even one with Ms. McCray many years ago, I think 20-some years ago. So I know how difficult it is. And I'm hearing the news. Right now, Florida's funded 50th for our teachers. Next year, we're going to remain 50th. I'm seeing the budget cuts. I'm seeing increased budgeting in some areas, but in education, we continue to be cut. And I sometimes think to myself, if we didn't pass that millage, I can't imagine where we'd be sitting today. But I have to advocate for my schools for Renaissance pay. I think it's so important. When I look at Lato, Oak Grove, all these schools, I'm concerned that our Renaissance schools will one day become transformation schools. The challenges that you have when you're working in a school with low income, and the challenges as far as making sure that students have the resources that they need, you know, making sure that families, I know for myself, just as a teacher, you end up spending a lot of your own resources just to support the students, the families. It's so challenging. I think about even like Tampa Bay Boulevard, where there's huge, huge vacancies, and what do we do to attract those individuals? So I urge you in the Cabinet, and as we go through, to really look down at Renaissance pay. I've received multiple, multiple letters. I know I'm looking back at someone who sent me a letter just the other day, multiple individuals who are working. District 1 is probably one of the most impacted schools because of Renaissance pay. And if you look at our schools and you see our achievement in our scores, and how well those schools are doing, it's because of our educators. The biggest impact for a child's life is the class size and the quality of the teacher in front of them. It's not the building that they're in. It's not the resources. It's not the technology. It's really the educator. And so I really would like to continue looking at that and looking at how, where can we make other cuts to make sure that we can pay those schools that are just so needed. I don't want my schools, I mean, there's nothing wrong with transformation schools, but we provide that support. I don't want to see our Renaissance schools become transformation schools. And I don't want to see teachers who, you know, they have to pay their bills. I mean, you go into teaching, someone said, "I never went into teaching to think I'd become wealthy." Well, I never thought I'd have to have two or three jobs to support my family. So I think it's really important that we look at that. I hate to see a plus with the millage and then a minus with the Renaissance pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't help but say, ditto, ditto. I agree. Member Combs, you know, when you work at a high-needs marginalized community school or separate school, the teachers face trauma, they face absenteeism, they face low reading levels. And, you know, when we expanded, if that's the right word, to the Renaissance, you know, it takes a special teacher to, they get worn out. I mean, I was worn out after three or four years teaching in that environment, because as Member Combs, you're using your money, you're using extra time, you're doing more than the, certainly more than the eight-to-five job. So, I mean, I don't know what can be done, but I have a question. And I want to thank you too, Ms. McCray. You have spent such wonderful years in putting transformation schools in a very high caliber, and you have raised those scores, you've hired those wonderful teachers. But now we have the absence of the Renaissance. So how does that interface? What shall we expect from the, minus the Tampa Bay Boulevard-type schools into the transformation? How is that going to work?
So our Renaissance program, our Renaissance schools and transformation schools were two separate entities. So Transformation Network was performance-based. Remember that Renaissance was poverty. Those schools that were in Renaissance were not in academic low standing. Those schools had high academic standing, which is why they were not part of the Transformation Network. So we don't know at this point what that's going to look like, but they were two separate groups of schools.
Well, I think that concludes my remarks, but the Tampa Bay Boulevard, that was a Renaissance school, correct? Okay, but...
Yes, it, yes. The performance of the school was a C, so it was a Renaissance.
Oh, okay, okay. That explains that. Well, at any rate, for the record, I concur with Member Combs. I hope to heck we find another source of revenue, because these schools, these tendered lives of these children, they need to be taken care of more than not. And we have probably a major, I don't know the statistics, but many, many, many of our students are coming from poverty-level homes. And this will only increase, not decrease. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to make those remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we move forward and we look at some of these opportunities that are being lost right now, we have to consider the fact that our children make up 20% of the population, yet they're 100% of our future. So at the end of the day, we've got to make sure that whatever systems we have in place within this district means that we are putting every possible resource where it needs to be, and that's with our teachers. So at the end of the day, Superintendent, if possible, if you can work with Dr. Whalen as she's working with the transition from synergy to focus. As anyone in this room and anyone across the district knows, I have zero faith in synergy. I think synergy has done exactly what we said was happening in the fall, and that it has given us bad data, that's given us bad outcomes, that's giving us bad income. And so that is part of the problem, that we cannot have a reliability to make sure that we have the ability to even have a discussion about Renaissance pay. So we need to make sure that we continue to verify and figure out a way that we're going to get good data coming out of our, of our systems. And so right now, we are in a position that we need to make sure we're accountable for every single student and every single possible revenue stream in this district. And so I think it's critically important that we pay attention to what's happened this year with synergy, and making sure that if we have to go back and do a due diligence, and making sure we've corrected every mistake, corrected every input that was in error, that we can make those errors and make those corrections as we move forward. We've got this summer and one last chance to make sure we can get whatever income we can based to have that correction data that can be sent up, and that is very important. I also think that as, I know that I missed the Medicaid workshop that I understood was quite valuable, that we continue working with our community partners, making sure that we still continue to work with making sure all of our individuals within our community are accessing that needed services they have so that our schools are correctly categorized, so that we can look for any additional funding that we can get based upon those needs, especially our Title Ones, our Title Fours, and et cetera, so that we make sure we take care of our students the best we can and give them the services that they need. But I 100% agree with Member Combs and Member Gray that if we don't make sure that all of our teachers get the resources they need. And unfortunately, when we look at certain schools, our Renaissance schools, they don't always have the need, the ability to provide resources like classroom materials or supplies. And so those teachers are picking up that slack, and that income is some of those things that we give those teachers the ability to put those things in the classroom. And so if we can find any way that we can deem our resources a priority, the resources must stay in our schools. And so we need to make sure we can consistently look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I concur with my board members here. You know, I know there's two separates between Renaissance and transformation, but you know, we still doing, we are still underserved students. It doesn't make a difference. You get, you got names, different names, but we still, we still are not serving our students the right way. So I would like to see some kind of way for us to get money for our schools, because we, I mean, we have improved a great deal, but we are long ways away from coming to our goal, what we really need to be successful. And, and I can go back to the days of the Focus, you know, we had Focus schools. We'd have every kind of name of school you can have. And we still, it's scuffling now to make it to the top. And we can make it to the top, but I would like to see the Renaissance schools stay in some kind of way, you know, some kind of budget or something to keep the kids in. And especially the transformation, and I understand transformation, you know, it's difficult. I was, hey, I was an area, I was an area leadership director at one time, and I had a lot of transformation schools then, Focus schools, they were called. So it's hard to keep teachers in both sects, in both sectors. Because if you don't give teachers the one and the other, they'll be leaving. So we got to continue to work hard to keep these teachers in place so we can help our student be successful in life. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Washington. Well, first, since we are, I'm glad we're talking about Renaissance schools, but that's not the item in front of us. First, for the transformation schools, I want to thank the Classroom Teachers Association for working with us and bringing this forward, and everyone in the district, because at least we are talking about our kids who are underperforming and making sure that we're supporting, you know, the teachers and the paraprofessionals and the administrators who are working in these schools. So first, for this item specifically, thank you to everyone for this. This is quite, you know, I, what was the amount of this agenda item? 11 million? What was it?
Yep.
15 million. 15 million's, you know, quite a bit of money when we're talking about what we're prioritizing. And I'm, you know, this is, what I'm assuming is this is all part of negotiations?
Correct.
Right? So the other piece is, I know we had talked about Renaissance schools in another board meeting, and we had talked about, from the last calculations, the Renaissance schools for that differential we were paying was $4 million on top of this. How many schools are considered Renaissance that are not transformation schools? Do you know that number by any chance? I'm asking Ms. McCray.
There's, I was counting, 25 schools would be Renaissance.
So those are 25 schools that have high poverty, but they're not following in the parameters of low enough student performance. However, the Renaissance, I mean, the Transformation Program, it's kind of flexible, right? Every year, we have schools that come in, every year is that, schools that we have come out. In fact, I see one on the list I thought we were exiting that's still on there. So what's the criteria to remain in being identified as transformation?
What we look to exit transformation is we want three consecutive years of a C or better. Because of the Renaissance, what we were doing was stair stepping. Anyone that would go from transformation back to traditional school, they would stair step to Renaissance. Since Renaissance is going away, we kept them for one year because they don't have that stair step to carefully go back to traditional. So this would be the only caveat year that you would see that. But three consecutive years of a C or better will exit you from the network. We call it a graduation, because we want our schools to graduate when they have consecutive, successful years.
Except then there's the issue of all the extra supports that they get, being able to maintain that grade once those supports are taken away. But that's a whole other, whole other conversation. So my question is, we will have an opportunity through further negotiations, if that $4 million MOU comes before us again as part of the Classroom Teachers Association, if they brought that forward in their negotiation as board members, if that's something we want to prioritize, that's important to us, we have an opportunity to revisit that as negotiations go through. Is that right?
Absolutely correct.
I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Well, thank you very much for answering all my questions, and thank you for this item and for all of the work for everybody involved. Board members, seeing that there are no more questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Next is 601, Payroll Schedules. Payroll Schedules for 2025-2026. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in essence, 601 here, payroll schedules, these are the dates of our pay dates for our 25-26 school year. Our payroll schedules assist in issuing the compensation, of course, to all of our district employees. Payroll schedules are necessary to be compliant with the School Board Policy 6510, which is payroll authorization, and then Policy 6480, which is on expenditures. So that is our payroll schedules that's attached for 25-26. And again, basically summarizes the dates of, for our employees when they are paid for the 25-26 school year, and highlights number of days, escrow, et cetera, in those payroll schedules. And that's 601.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve 601. I have a motion by Member Washington and a second by Member Rendon. I pulled this item, so I did have a question or a comment. I'm assuming that's going to you, Mr. Lewis.
I was looking at this item because I know that there are some teachers who are trying to figure out with their equalized pay, what their paychecks are going to be over the summer so they can budget over the summer. And it's been somewhat inconsistent in the last few years. So I was hoping to drive them to a document that would help them be able to figure out, you know, based on, because from what I see here, it's based on days, right? Each paid period has so many days they're being paid for. But what I was a little bit confused about on the list is it talks about instructional staff who are less than 12 months. But is that including equalized pay or not including it? Should there be two different charts for that, or how does the equalized pay work within this portion here?
Thank you for the question. I have my general manager here that handles payroll services, so I'm going to let her answer that for us.
Okay. Not Ms. Brown, but that's what your name says in front of it.
Sorry, Stephanie. Okay, so equalized pay is, you're contributing to that to cover you for the shortfall holidays. That would include Thanksgiving, Christmas, the winter break, and then spring break. That is actually paid out to you on your last check. So that does not cover you for summer. Extended year program, you can contribute a portion of your paycheck, and that will actually be paid to you over four paychecks in the summer. We did have a date change this year. It was actually to benefit the, a couple of, well, quite a few teachers actually called us. And in the past, the first payment for the summer, for the EYP, was the same day as your last check, which doesn't make sense. That was a five-day check and included equalized pay. So we moved it back two weeks, because the real benefit is when they return, it's a real heavy hit. That's a one-day paycheck. And we thought it would better benefit them to have that last check coincide with that shortfall check.
Okay. Well, first, that's good news, because that is some of the feedback that I got, I heard that caused anxiety. But if they were trying to calculate for that extended summer break, what their paychecks were going to look like, is that in this area here? Or where can they find that information?
Now, we have it in our SharePoint, and...
SharePoint.
Payroll Information@hcpss.net. They can email. And really, it's a percent. You can contribute a flat rate, or you can contribute a percent of your check. And you would be paid, that would just be divided equally over four paychecks in the summer. So it's completely driven by the employee.
Okay. And if there are other, like you said, other employees who are curious, because we did make that change after we approved this, it'll be public, and they can find that either in our agenda items, or are we going to put this on the website?
We'll put it in payroll informa, in the payroll SharePoint site.
Okay.
So yes. But any employee can just email payroll information, and we'll directly reach out to them.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all the questions that I have. And Member Rendon, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry. I didn't pull this item, but then all of a sudden, when they're asking, I had its question. I don't understand why we just don't allow a 12-month pay cycle, and we have all the different days and the, and I, I get what...
different days and things, and I get what you're, because there's companies all over the world that have salaries and have 12-month pay schedules, and if a staff leaves at the nine months, they leave at the nine months, and if they leave, you know, it's part of this, so I don't understand why we have to have certain times where we have certain days and certain times where we don't have days and they're on a salary, and we just can't have a salary schedule within a payroll schedule. It doesn't make any sense to me.
So just to get clarification, Member Rendon, so teachers are on a 10-month schedule, they work 10 months?
I know, I get that. So like, for example, if I have a salary, right, and I'm, because there are places around this country that are in school districts that do a 12-month pay schedule, even though they work 10 months because they're hired, right? So you can still create a 12-month pay schedule if you're on salary, even if you're only calendared till May. You can choose to do that, and then if you're not renewed your contract, you pay them out for the summer. Like, we can choose to do that as a district, why would we not give that as an option as an employer?
That's a great question, and I'm going to see if Ms. Heaton
And you may not be able to answer me right now, but can we at least think about it?
Yeah, so, because we do that, but we offer the extended year pay, where then it basically, we kind of do it, but we just don't call it that, would be my interpretation or understanding of that.
We would have to really look at contracts in general, because there's, and I can't direct the exact Florida statute, but it gets into prepaying employees because of the way our holiday schedule is set up and the employee work calendar, which is directly derived from the student calendar. So I think that it's definitely something we could look at.
Yeah, because I know legally it can be done, and I know that we're talking, because we already do that now, if you're telling me that we're, we have this holiday that we pre-save you and then we pay them later, it's already screwed up as it is. So why don't we try to make it, this is one of those things that we could just make it easier for our employees to know they're going to have that over the summer. If we choose not to renew their contract, then we give them an exit. It's possible to do this, this is a possible thing, to at least look at as an option.
Absolutely.
Finance can look into that and provide some more feedback if that helps.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Combs?
Yeah, I was going to say, I appreciate your sentiments, Member Rendon, but I know as a former teacher, a lot of teachers prefer that. They personally prefer either getting paid 10 months, the way they live their life, or they like the 12 months, like I have some of my good friends, they go to Europe all summer, they don't want to get paid in the summer, do you know what I'm saying? So I think that, I know what you're saying as far as the day, but I think that, you know, any kind of flexibility that teachers feel that they can have, I think that's very important, that we provide those flexible options for teachers, because we're not paying them the salaries. So I think the way people are getting paid, I don't want to take something away when somebody has a choice now, and all of a sudden, you're limiting choices for them. So I just think that's important. I think, why break something if it's working, and it's worked for many years, and people are happy, and I'm not receiving complaints about that? If we change that, I feel like there would be some educators, because sometimes personally, it's hard for people to balance their own budget, and they like to do it either a 10-month or 12-month, and they've chosen that for their own personal life.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Member Combs, I think you misunderstood, I wasn't saying to do that in, like, not including this, but make it have as an option. So I wasn't looking to eliminate anything, I was looking to give employees options of what they want to do, so that there were multiple options, because I see we do have a 12-month, but it's the way in which they play with their holidays, and they get a big one here and a small check there. So I was just asking that we can provide the education of options for anybody to choose from, not to take anything away.
Good conversation, good conversation. Seeing that there is no further comments or questions, please vote when your lights And the motion passes unanimously. And now we go on to 707, Proposed Bell Schedules for the 25-26 school year. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are our bell schedules, that of course, board members, you do this every single year. These bell schedules must be board-approved before each academic year, so all the bell schedules, these are bell schedules for every one of our schools going into the 25-26 school year. You'll see the agenda item comes from Laura Hill and Transportation, but this is really a collaborative effort between Mr. Farkas, of course, and Operations, Ms. Fawcett's team in Academic Services, and of course, Mr. Graves as Chief of School. So multiple divisions work through our bell schedules to ensure that, number one, that we ensure that all of our students arrive in school on time and are picked up on time. So that really drives a lot of our bell schedules, is Transportation, that's why the item comes before you, from Transportation. So for this 25-26 school year, there are minor changes to middle school and high school times, except now, of course, we have the addition of our new high school, Morgan High School, that'll open up next year. So that, again, board member, you've seen our bell schedules, this is, just has to be approved before the 25-26 school year, and of course, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C 707. I have a motion by Member Rendon and a second by Member Gray. Member Combs, Member Gray, and I all pulled this item. Member Gray, do you have a question or comment?
All right. First, I want to thank Laura Hill for doing such a wonderful job and her team, Mr. Farkas, and yeah, Laura has just really made it more efficient and collectively. So, you know, just for edification, these are the questions that, Laura, are you here? Is Ms. Hill here?
No, Mr. Farkas is here.
Oh, Mr. Farkas, okay. So this is like yes or no, but when we start checking to see if our bell schedule is the best, the most efficient, I go by these questions. Does it enhance safety?
So yes, and one of the biggest things we have is the common practice, we want one hour in between, that's the most efficient way for us to, from a transportation standpoint, make that happen. It also allows us, from a transportation standpoint, to make sure that we're on time. So yes, from a safe standpoint, buses aren't rushing to get from one place to the other.
And does it reduce traffic? And I know the Alonzo, the charter school there, I mean, that's a conundrum, but that was a hard decision, or let's just say, when you had to not give that extra time or less time.
100%, this does not help traffic at all, and I'm not sure there's anything in Tampa that does, any of us that drive, but that being said, you'll see some changes, you'll see Morgan that has an 840 or a 340 start for exactly that reason. In areas, we know, for those that have been on Big Ben Road, or have been on Bloomingdale, or have been on Bruce B. Downs, or any of the, Dale Mayberry, you know, there's certain roads where it's just standstill. So you'll see a little bit 5- and 10-minute adjustments, and try to accommodate those, but no, traffic is still going to be a struggle for us, I think, that's part of it. And honestly, it's not the distance in between the school sites, it's sitting on roads stopped and not being able to move, just as it is for all of us, and we travel in the mornings and the afternoons as well.
So well said, too, traffic is everywhere, and it's getting more and more. And the other question I have, will it save us money, this schedule?
Most assuredly will, and here's why, because every bus driver can do three routes, elementary, middle, and high school. If we didn't, we'd have to have it where you'd only take two routes, it would cost more money, more drivers, that part of it, too. So by having it an hour apart, then you can have drivers, what we call levels, each of the three levels.
And you know, one of the questions, thank you for that response, one of the questions that was really a lot of friction was the kids are getting to school late, missing first period, and we can go on and on, and so will this correct that situation?
Well, it's already begun to be corrected. You haven't heard as much noise about that, because in conjunction with Dr. Patton, Ms. Hill led the charge to make sure that we have more drivers. We're not all the way there, we have almost 100 more drivers than we did at the beginning of the school year, and they've continued to do that. They have geared up towards summer to make that happen, to get as much as we can. So we want to thank Dr. Patton, we want to thank, even though Mr. Lewis wasn't here, the Business Department for making sure we raise salaries for drivers, the board for that, because that helps us as well. But honestly, we're, we still have vacancies, but we have over 100 more drivers than we did at the beginning of the year. That's why you don't hear as much noise around late times for getting to school on time.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, but I just verbally do want to thank Laura Hill for what she's done, and thank you, Mr. Farkas, for answering all those questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Combs?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I just wanted to thank you, and we've talked a lot about this schedule, I think the most important thing is that if the state had adjusted the schedule, we would have already been in compliance, and I think that's really important, because as other districts around the state were scrambling, and I know that the legislature decided not to do that, to know that we were already in compliance, I think is really great.
And part of the non-compliance is a little bit misleading, you actually have to justify to the state why you're not going to meet that. So even though it's kind of been waived, and again, we've already met that, this board, many of the members that are on the board went through that fun experience of changing those bell times a few years back, and the 17 for the 2018 school year, and we've already done that. So we don't have to write any letters, we're good to go, we're in compliance and ready to move forward. So we appreciate the board and their foresight a few years back.
Thank you, and I also want to mention, you know, Laura Hill is just doing such an amazing job, working so hard with Transportation. I know in the beginning of the year, we received so many emails, and anytime I have a question or a problem, when I receive something from a parent, she's always so, so, you know, making sure that she contacts the family, follows up, and really works so hard to adjust those schedules, because it's a bear of a, you know, and I think just driving from one area to another, and all the needs, and all the different buses, it's just, it's a huge, huge challenge, and I think she's just doing an amazing job.
And I appreciate you saying that, and I'm sure she's watching and smiling and being humble right now. That being said, for the board, it is almost 90,000 kids we take every single day to and from school, and we think of our magnet schools that all start at the same time and have transfer ramps and pick you up at home and move. That first week of school is a little crazy, but now it's a well-oiled machine, so you're right, Laura Hill's done a wonderful job, her team that's out there's done a wonderful job, and I appreciate you recognizing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I wasn't going to speak, but then I kind of had a, I want to make a kind of comment on this. This bell schedule is not new, it's just now adjusted based upon our hurricane-adjusted schedule from the end of the year to the beginning of next year.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. This replicates almost exactly to what it was the beginning of last school year.
Okay, and so I need to make this clear to the public, if we go into a situation like we did last year where we had excessive amount of days, this schedule is subject to change so that we need, if we need to make up some minutes, then we have the ability to do that, so that we are going, retroing back to the beginning of the 24-25 school year and what those times were.
Yes, ma'am, and that's kind of what Mr. Ayers was talking about. Colleen's team and Ms. Fawcett's team was, we worked very hard to try to get some more minutes and pad those minutes to do that, and a lot of people spent a lot of time doing that to end up where we were at the beginning of the year. So you are exactly correct, if we do have hurricane days and have to make it up, we will be making up time, because we didn't want to sacrifice being late on a regular basis to middle schools in the afternoon, or being late to sporting events in the evening, because of being late to middle schools and that part of it, too. So yes, if we have hurricane days, and let's hope we don't, we will be making up that time.
Thank you. And you know, I want to echo Member Combs' sentiment to Ms. Hill's department as it goes. I don't think people realize how much time and energy it goes into to creating the routes, monitoring the bus drivers. All year long, we've got safety teams that are going out and just randomly monitoring buses to make sure the lights are going on at the appropriate time, yellow lights are going on before then there's a red light, making sure they know they're going to be stopping, and the arm goes out. There are so many things that these bus drivers have to have in mind, let alone the behaviors of the students on there, the safety of the drivers around them, and so her entire team just does an outstanding job of keeping our drivers where they need to be, making sure the drivers are safe, and making sure that they are continuing to maintain our level of safety that we require of them as well, and making sure that they're accurate in what they're doing with their driving. So I want to thank not only just Ms. Hill, but the entire team, it is an entire team.
That's why she's been elected President-elect of the FAPT, the Florida People Transportation, so that's, she, the state has recognized that as well. Like I said, we talked about Ms. Hall and student nutrition, Ms. Hill's the same way in Transportation, doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Farkas, I know we have recruited and worked really hard with Transportation, and I know it's difficult, but how many drivers are we short now?
We're almost at 100 drivers that we're short. Remember, at the beginning of last year, we were 250 drivers short, so we've narrowed that about 150. We've also optimized routes to Ms. Rendon's point, so we're able to condense about 40 or 50 routes, and we're able to hire another 100 drivers. So we're still just under 100 drivers short, but if you ask Ms. Hill, I could call her right now, and she'd tell you, well, I've got 14 people in the class for next week. So she's actively looking for that and making sure she does it, but we've gone from 250 to under 100 with the help of HR and the board support.
Good, that's great, that's great to hear, I wanted to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. So yeah, I'm not sure if you kind of answered my question through speaking with Member Rendon, but I know this item was submitted and then pulled, and the other option, we were actually changing those schedules to try to build in that time in case we did have another hurricane season. Is the reason we decided not to do that because, like you said, then we'll end up being later, ending the middle school later, and there were some concerns about that?
There are. The traffic has gotten worse for those of us that are here, and we tried to make that happen. The fall is usually a little bit worse for us, because we have athletic events much more in the fall, football games on Friday nights and things like that. We worked pretty hard to try to make that work, and then it came to Cabinet, which is the way it works, it bubbles up to the Cabinet level and to the Superintendent, who, when we thought about the pros and cons before, that's when we, the Superintendent actually made the call and said, I'm not comfortable with the middle school assistant principals and principals and teachers having to stay with those kids and be late, and therefore we took it back to the drawing board, the same people that came up with it the first time came through, so Colleen's team and Rick's team and mine, and tried to come up with it, and we ended up right where we were. Again, there's a few adjustments, it's not exactly the same as the beginning of the school year, but yes, that's why we were concerned about being late to middle schools.
As a middle school parent, I thank you for that. I don't know if I'll still feel that way, God forbid we have another hurricane season, but as of right now, I appreciate it. So just to clarify, the only thing that changed is Tinker, because I did see that time change, is that correct? That did change?
No, Tinker did change on that part, too. That's the only switch in that part, too, but we added Morgan, there's a couple of schools that have been, you know, five or 10 minutes here to make sure that we can, that are on busy, busy streets, but yes, it's minimal, most of them are exactly the same as they were last fall.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. Oh, me, I thought I pressed it. All right, and the motion passes unanimously. We'll now go on to 1001, Managed Print Services, and Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this agenda item here is copiers and printers. So this agenda item seeks approval to award a competitive bid for district-wide copier leases and to expand classroom and office printer coverage, maximizing economies of scale. This contract allows the district to begin replacing the aging and off-lease copiers while also standardizing printer models across sites to streamline purchasing and support. So first-year costs are estimated at $2.5 million, which is approximately $800,000 less than last year. This new contract also includes features to track print volume by location and enables automated hardware security and performance updates. I want to thank Mr. Farkas taking the lead on this item, getting this to the finish line here. This is 1001, which is our copiers and leases as we move to a different company for the next school year, so that's 1001.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C 1001. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Gray. Member Combs, Member Gray, and I pulled this item. Member Combs, do you have a question?
I mostly had a comment with Mr. Farkas, I think over the last five years, there's very few contracts that I've seen a decrease. I mean, I've seen huge increases in cost for everything across the line. To see something that's so important, I know as a former educator, a former teacher, a copier is just such an important part of a school. I remember, you know, working at schools and trying to like, just say, you know, talk I remember, you know, working at schools and trying to like, just say, you know, talk to it, you know, the copier. So, you know, copiers are so important in schools, and I'm sure even with technology, I still think that schools are using it readily. And I appreciate a contract that's actually lowered. Look forward to seeing what the vendor does and see how consistent, and also to make sure that the schools are happy with the product that they're receiving.
100%. And I appreciate you saying that. I cannot take any credit for this, though, other than pushing it towards the end. Pablo and his team, as well as, there was a committee. It went through three phases to get through with some of our end users and some of the people that see that firsthand. So 100% agree with them. And I appreciate Ms. Murphy and procurement department for kind of finalizing and getting the contract done. I just was impatient trying to get it across the line so we could get it. For those, we wanted to make sure we started this summer. That's why I wanted to make sure I got to this board meeting. So as soon as they leave, you'll see a bunch of replacements. But we have over 450 large copy machines, which means that it's going to take them throughout the next year, where they'll be, they'll be replacing them and getting the new system here. So we're excited about that, to have new copy machines at all the sites, and make sure the service model, because that was a big, large portion of the scoring.
Yeah. And I was going to say, if we can continue just seeing that the quality and that it's working effectively, I mean, I'm glad we got to have a reduction. But just to keep, you know, I think that's a really very, very important part of a school is the copier machine. And, you know, people are laughing, but it's true.
No, it is. So those two of us have seen Shake and his old mimeograph machine trying to roll that thing through and get it, too. So yes.
I mean, copiers are really important. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you ask a teacher, we're talking teacher appreciation, what's the most appreciated element in a school? It is the copier. It is the most essential before school, during school, and after school. And the administration folks know as well. So I think this is a great asset and aspect of teacher appreciation. So thank you for bringing this forward. And I'm sure our teachers thank you as well. So that's all my comments.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question, and I didn't think of this earlier. I don't know why. But with the decrease in costs, is it going to limit any school and the amount of copies they can do?
Not at all. It's going to allow us to track it. And so if we see that there's a school that's using, right now we have antiquated information at a central office saying, "Hey, this school A is doing twice as many copies. We need to get them a different type of copy machine, a high-volume copier." Or what's going on at this school? Why are they doing so many copies? So 100%, there's not a limit on that, too. This just has tracking information. So we know if Ms. Rendon's running off church flyers or things like that, we'd know how many of those are going to be there. So.
I will remind you if I'm going to print flyers, but I don't, I want to make sure that we don't set ourselves into a position that we have to limit our teachers and their ability to make copies for their classrooms.
100%.
Because I think that we cannot do that. There were years where I remember as a parent being asked to go buy copy paper because the school would run out of copy paper, and it wasn't that long ago. So I do want to make sure that this is a good thing, but we don't penalize our schools because we have a good thing.
You bet. And copy paper still comes with staples. You guys approved that last board meeting. But yes, the number of copies comes with this, and we'll ensure that doesn't happen. And I'm sure if something like that did happen, we will hear it very loudly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. That was similar to what I was going to ask, to make sure we're not limiting copies for our instructional staff or anyone in the school, really. But how does one go about if they need a replacement of a copier? And how many copiers do we allot per school? Is that based, how does the allocation formula work? Just so we can figure out.
Well, I will say, with new instruction, a lot of people aren't using copies like they used to 20 years ago. I mean, honestly, with our new line boards and some of the things that we're doing and the almost one-to-one devices we have, we haven't had that. I mean, copies are still a big part of it. We won't be naive to that part. That being said, there's an easy way to, there's a 1-800 number on the front of the machine right now. That will be the same way when we go move to the new machines as well. But we'll be able to track that and say, "Hey, do you need more copies? Do you need a different type of machine on that?" So 100%, you won't have to worry about that. That'll be done behind the scenes. That's one of the big portions of this copy is making sure that we have, we're able to support that.
But do larger schools get more copy machines placed throughout the school?
They 100% do. But right now, it's based on a basic formula. How many kids do you have? How many teachers do you have? That's not always the direct correlation to how many copies you make. So yeah.
Especially if you have a lot of subs who print out packets.
Yes, ma'am. Exactly.
All right. Well, thank you. I don't think anyone else is in the queue. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We are now going to go on to employee and student comment. We'll now take employee and student input. Even though we hear public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it is sometimes difficult for our employees and for our students of the district to attend meetings at 4:00 p.m. There are many ways for our employees and students to make their voices heard, including through union representatives, emails, phone calls, one-to-one conversations, and public comment at the beginning of the meeting because the board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we're creating yet another avenue for our employees and students to speak to the board. We're setting aside 30 minutes for employees and students of the district to speak to the board about any issue that's on your mind. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda items on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity for you to speak to the board about any issues related to your job or the district. Each speaker will have three minutes. I'll now call up the first five speakers. And we're going to do our students first, because I know you guys have testing from what I hear, right? So thank you for our employees for allowing them to come first. First speaker, we're all ready.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Ayers and members of the board. My name is Liliana Anthony of Hillsborough Virtual School K-12. And today I bring to your attention the negative impacts of AI on the country and a brief solution on how the county can be a role model for both students and other counties alike. On April 11th of this year, the Hillsborough Marketing Account posted an AI image of school action figures, showcasing a wonderful message about the connection between teachers, administration, and students. Unfortunately, this positive sentiment was drowned out by the dismay of the usage of AI and how the simple post unintentionally undermined the goals of the county. As the seventh biggest county of America, we have the influence and the resources to combat the damaging uses of AI in schools. Our students, the future doctors, engineers, and school board members follow the footsteps of the role models in front of them. It is important to model the behavior of hard work rather than relying on these ease-of-generated models. The lack of creativity behind AI not only steals from other artists, but also encourages kids away from creativity and into the hands of machines. It is hard to deter kids from using AI to bypass the crucial learning in schools by portraying the same behavior. AI uses energy that destroys the environment and sources from IIT follow-up examples electrical, carbon dioxide, and water usage. It engangers the careers of future students at Blake who devote their studies to the arts. Dual-enrolled students who are getting ahead in college only be blocked by artificial barriers. And this goes directly against the policies that Hillsborough County stands for. Throughout my time at the Superintendent Advisory Council, one of the topics that we studied was the usage of AI in schools. And the commonly agreed sentiment is that AI is best used as a tool, not a crutch. Just as I do not have a time to touch on all the harmful impacts of AI, I do not have time to cover all the benefits of AI as a tool. Even as someone who does not support AI, I know there are plenty of wonderful and positive impacts of using it. However, unfortunately, this is not one of them. From someone who has such faith in the county as an art major myself, it is truly disheartening to see the county use AI. And I know that fellow students share the sentiment. This is not the fault of the social media team, but rather the lack of knowledge on the issue. The April 11th post is a play on a recent trend, and it's easy to hop on the bandwagon. What is important is what is learned from the past and what can be done to make it right in the future by supporting the careers of growing students. One saying by AI supporters is that AI makes art accessible. While this is a controversial take, in either circumstance, art is accessible for Hillsborough County. With talented musicians at Blake and budding graphic designers in Middleton, there are plenty of students who'd love to help combat AI while supplying real, human-made art. By employing the artists of Hillsborough County, possibly through a student contest or submissions, not only can the county avoid harming their futures with AI, but also jumpstart the young artists' careers. By employing, oh, the main goal of the county is to help kids graduate. In my time of working as a council, I can tell that the futures of students are incredibly important to the county, too. By encouraging the creatives and providing an environment nourishing to both artists and any other job that's at risk of AI, Hillsborough County can continue to be a role model for the county and the country. Thank you so much for your time. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Nate Clement, and I am a senior at Robinson High School. Good afternoon, members of the school board, and thank you for having the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council here today. One of the most important things we can do as a school system is listen to students, and more importantly, to act on what we hear. Through this advisory council, we've seen the impact of student voice in shaping policy, sparking ideas and building a stronger district. Students need opportunities. When we're invited to join clubs, try new sports, take on leadership roles, or explore interests outside the classroom, it gives us a reason to show up and discover who we are. We're lucky to be a part of a district with so many great programs already in place, but continuing to expand access is how we move forward. 30 years ago, a girl could not come to school excited to play flag football because it didn't exist. Today, she can. That's real progress. And there are more opportunities like that waiting to be put in place. Every new opportunity is a step toward a more inclusive, engaged, and inspired student body. And I thank you for continuing to support student voice and for making space for us to help shape the future of the school district.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair, school board members, Superintendent Ayers. My name is Malachi Brown. I am a proud member of the SSAC Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and I am the senior for Milton's representative. In my time here in this school district, Hillsborough County, I'll say about 20 years through osmosis via my mother, about 13 years here physically. This school district has done more than just prepared me for life. It's prepared me to lead. It's prepared me to lead other schools, other children from other school districts that I've met when I went to North Carolina A&amp;T for honors weekend. Seeing those students and seeing how much I stood out is not only a testament to all of you in this room as our leaders, teachers, our counselors, all the instructional staff that we have at the seventh-largest school district in the United States of America. So on that note, Happy Teachers' Day. All right, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Mom, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Happy Emancipation Day to all those that celebrate. And I just wish that we will continue to cultivate and build up our leaders wherever we can find them. I think that's the main point. Usually, students that are in these positions and serve as senior class presidents, as I do, serve as the Thurgood Marshall History Club president, as I do, captain the Brain Bowl team, we usually saddle these students with a lot, right? And it becomes a lot. Working on building and finding and searching for more students to take on not only the burden, but the privilege and the opportunity to learn and grow wherever we can find them is very incumbent upon us as we go on to our future, especially at the illustrious George S. Milton High School, led by Principal Burton. And we want to make sure that we're continuing to support our staff that allows for these opportunities to happen. I don't get to Mr. Ayers and Mr. Nelson and Mr. Shake if I don't have my teacher, Mr. Robert Trey Kennedy, to find me where I didn't necessarily see myself as a leader and to cultivate me to being one, along with Ms. Sunny Roy Boyd and Tyler Tazwell. So thank you so much for everything that you do. Please continue to do so. You are absolutely the best. And Tiger Pride, Tiger Proud.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, board members. Oh, good evening, board members and Mr. Ayers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Margaret Aladakun, and I'm a junior at the Jefferson High School. Go Dragons! I've had the honor of serving on the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council this year. Being a part of this council has been an eye-opening and empowering experience. It gave students like me a chance to speak up, share our perspectives, and feel truly heard by district leaders. I've learned how decisions are made at the district level. And more importantly, I've learned that student voices matter in those decisions. Through our meetings, I've gained more confidence in speaking up and collaborating with other students from different schools and backgrounds. We discussed real issues from mental health school to school safety to student engagement. And it meant a lot knowing that our ideas were considered thoughtfully by the superintendent and the team. The most important thing that I've taken away from being a part of this council is that we not only have the privilege to speak for ourselves, but as a leader, we are in the position to speak on behalf of others. And our job is to make sure that everyone is being heard. This council helped me grow as a leader, and I'm really grateful for the experience. Thank you to Mr. Ayers for listening to us and showing us that leadership includes listening, learning, and including student voices in the conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was a great first student comment. You have a hard act to follow.
You just stole my line. I was like, wow, that's a tough act to follow. I just wanted to say, wow, our students, just an amazing job. The four of you who came up here, this can be intimidating to talk in front of them. So amazing job. And that's why we do what we do. I mean, the whole time those four were talking, I mean, my heart was just filled. And I'm getting a little verklempt. And those of you who know me, they know that that doesn't happen. So. And thank you for having this advisory council. I think it's a great opportunity and a way to raise student voices. So just shameless HCTA plug, since we were talking about copy paper. Any educator out there watching, at the end of every rep council, our Hillsborough Educated Retired Group raffles copy paper because we know how valuable it is. So be a member of HCTA if you aren't. Also, I'm going to go off script on equalized pay and EYP. So first off, one of the common questions we get at HCTA is, "What the heck is equalized pay? Why do we need to do it? Are we hourly employees? Are we salary employees? Why do we have to do this to that?" And I agree, Member Rendon. If we're 10-month employees, why can't we just take 10 months salaried, which is what we are, divided by however many paychecks we get, and that should be good. EYP is something different and is something that a lot of educators appreciate the flexibility of, because some people just don't have the ability to save all year long. So just a little talk about that. No, it's the end of the year. And while we're wrapping up, last year, we started a new trend, and that was coming to the bargaining table early before the school year started or before the end of the school year. And we're doing that again, legislature willing. And I've heard from almost all of you up here about prioritizing our employee salaries when creating the budget. And we truly appreciate that. We love hearing that. And that really hasn't been done in the past. So we're hoping that we can start a new trend in this year, that we really are prioritizing our employee salaries when we are creating that budget. Because when we're investing in our educators, we are showing that we really do prioritize our students. And as we know, they are all amazing. So enjoy. I know you have graduation polio coming up. So enjoy that and have a great end of the year.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Liz Baker, Tampa Bay Boulevard, the BRT there, Behavior Resource teacher. And I had to change my speech rule because I wanted to thank, I wanted to extend my thanks, sincere thanks for reconsidering moving forward with Renaissance Pay on Teacher Appreciation Day. You know, this decision feels especially meaningful. It was more than a gesture. It's a message that the district values our dedication, growth, and challenges we face in this profession. We don't do this work for bonuses or recognition. We do this because we love our students. But loving them doesn't mean that the work is easy. As a nonviolent crisis intervention, NCI-certified employee, and an NCI instructor for Hillsborough County, I've experienced firsthand physical and emotional toll to this job that it takes. And I see it with our teachers as well. We manage students' crises, sometimes involving physical aggression with care and professionalism, but it is wearing. That is why restortation of the residence, Renaissance Pay, means so much. It's not just about money. It's about morale. It's about recognizing the efforts that we put in, especially when the job asks more than it has ever before. This step forward says to the teachers, "We see you. We support you. We value you." Thank you for choosing to take this action on the day meant to appreciate educators. It sends a powerful message, and it truly makes us feel seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Kim Henriquez from Lauri Elementary, kindergarten teacher. It was great to hear the students speak because maybe I've got one of those future students in my room right now. So I'm going to start cultivating them. I didn't really prepare anything other than I am appreciative of this badge that gets me in the gate early so that I can go use the copy machine before anybody gets there. So that's nice. But I don't really have to use a lot of copies because a lot of our materials, our consumables are very appreciated. So I like that. Stomscopes could use a little bit more practice materials in there. I'm having to supplement that. But my main concern is for next year, because we're ending this year. It's been brought to my attention that we are not, no longer having the kindergarten inclusion classrooms, the KIX classrooms, I guess, have been closed down, or we're not using them anymore. So as a former ESC teacher, I do understand that that means some kids that have some needs are going to be in our gen ed classrooms in kindergarten because they're coming from the PEEPs program and the pre-K program, the ones that have developmental delays and whatnot. So it's, and then when you have kids coming into kindergarten, sometimes you're getting kids that have needs that you have no idea that have needs. So I'm just, this is an ask. I don't know if it's even possible. I know money is what it is. But I'm not sure if we could look at the kindergarten assistant teacher ratio and maybe have a little bit support, more support. Because right now, I get a kindergarten aide for like 40 minutes for the whole day, and I've got her at the very beginning of the day. It would just be nice to have another pair of hands, another pair of eyes, just for safety reasons, if anything, and for liability issues that if you've got... Because, I mean, let's be realistic here. We have the rise in autism, the kids in the spectrum is rising. So we're needing a little bit more assistance in the room. And it's, the rigor of kindergarten now is a lot different than it was years ago. So that's just my ask, is maybe we could look at that formula. Thanks. Have a great summer.
Thank you. Well, thank you again to our Superintendent's Advisory Committee. Also, thank you, Melissa Erickson, for all the work that you do to assist Superintendent Ayers with that. I know you do a lot of work, especially with our seniors. So thank you for that, to make sure that, you know, they can be a part of this and participate. So great first comments. And thank you again to our employees. And now, with that, we're going to move on to the superintendents' comments. It's your turn. So here you go, Mr. Super- So here you go, Mr. Superintendent.
I do want to open up just with some comments around our Student Advisory Council. So this is, in the year I came on board as superintendent, was one of the first things in coordinating with Ms. Erickson was to develop this advisory council. So these are all juniors and seniors in all of our high schools. So, that's 56 students. A lot of them, we had most of them here today, some of them because of AP tests and all the stuff that's happening, couldn't be here. But it's been an honor to work alongside of them this year. And I want to thank also Dr. Grayes, Gary Brady, Rob Nelson, who are there every single time along with me. Those three are unbelievable and kind of coordinate and working through ideas of our council and myself. So you guys are amazing, and I do have a short video that kind of summarizes, that was developed. Ben, if you can stand up. Ben Tilly is senior over at Riverview. You will see Ben on ESPN one day, I know that for sure. But if we could show that video that just kind of summarizes this last year of our advisory council and our 56 students. Thank you.
Mr. Ayers has organized a superintendent's Student Advisory Council along with Ms. Erickson, where we work on problems of practice. We talk about pertinent issues, current issues, but we also talk about the inner workings of the school system, everything from operations to, as we're talking today, we're talking about leadership, you know, pathways into education, and all kinds of, you know, different topics that the kids, whether they get into education or whether they don't, it'll help them in all facets of their life, and they also help us by, you know, developing solutions. You want to get student ownership. You want to get ownership from that group. So they're a coveted group of what started as seniors, which is now juniors and seniors, because you've got to build from within, and that's how Mr. Ayers wants to do it. Even as a high school principal, even as a region superintendent, you have to get a student's perspective. You have to get a kid's perspective. It's much different than when we were growing up. So the goal is to help us work through some problems of practice, find some solutions, make things better for kids, for the future kids that are coming through Hillsborough County Schools.
We're a collective of student leaders from all over the county, juniors and seniors, representatives of each school, and we come together on a monthly basis to talk about some of the challenges that are being faced on the school level.
I just kind of worked to be nice, be there, be willing to stay after school for an event if I was needed to speak or just help run the event, and really dedicate myself to the school, and then that spoke for itself.
It's a way for us to be the voice of the many, even though there's just a few of us. We take what we learn back to our schools, we get their input, and then we bring the input here. So it's really like a two-way street.
I've definitely learned a lot about just how big our school district is and a lot of different jobs that are kind of available. I'm majoring in education in college, and I hope to be a teacher, and definitely through this program, I've learned that there's a lot more for me than just being a teacher, like, I kind of want to be a principal, and then I can work in the district. And it's just very, very interesting to learn all about how you run a school district and how certain decisions come about and stuff.
The school board, the superintendent, like, it's such a cool idea to have the contacts to be able to spread my opinion, and getting the resources to be able to do that is great.
Many of our students have just done great things. When you look at all of the things that they've brought to the table, they really stand out as leaders in their schools, in our school district, and they've helped solve some of the problems that we really face in our school district this year.
All right. Again, I always want to, we'll continue my comments, but Ben, Tilly, Ben, thanks for putting that together. I just wish Nate would have combed his hair in that one. Coming from tennis practice, all right. Well, let me roll through this. Yeah, yeah. So we're going to move through my superintendent's comments. It's been a busy last couple of weeks, so I do have some highlights I want to move through. So of course, this week, we are proud of Recognize Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers go above and beyond to ensure our students receive the best education possible, and we're incredibly fortunate to have such talented and caring professionals in our schools. I started yesterday, and I'm excited to be visiting our teachers all this week at schools to thank them for all that they do, not just this week, but every single day. So that was this morning, and today I joined some of our board members to surprise a few teachers in their classroom with appreciation gifts. Our first stop was at Anderson Elementary, it seemed like two days ago, but it was just this morning that we were there, at Anderson Elementary, where we gave out a few public gift cards, and one lucky first-grade teacher, Sadie Covington, who entered our raffle. So we had, when I sent the email out, within an hour and a half, we had 5,000 teachers that had entered to win this, and Sadie Covington over at Anderson won four tickets to Bus Garden, so she was the big winner. We then stopped by Bloomingdale Chamberlain-Alonzo with more appreciation gifts, and I'll be visiting schools all week with our board members to surprise our teachers. Tomorrow, the email I sent out today, we'll be giving out Lightning tickets. So we have 20 winners, 20 teachers will win tomorrow. Each teacher will win a four-pack to Lightning game. So again, tremendous partners with Tampa Lightning, so 20 winners tomorrow. I'll be visiting one big winner first thing in the morning who wins, and I still don't know who that is just yet. So our school choice and magnet application, we pride ourselves on being a choice school district, offering many options for our students. So as you all know, we have three choice periods. Our second school choice and magnet application window closed in late March. We had over 9,000 applicants apply for a school within our district that fits their specific needs. Of that, we made 7,000 offers. So to date, between the first and second application periods, we had over 20,000 applicants and over 16,000 offers during our application window. So board members, remember back in April, we highlighted the Middleton Robotics team, and they were on, I think it was Channel 10, and we played that. Today's the update. Congratulations to them. They went to the world championships on April 15th, where they won five out of the 10 matches they were in. Congrats to them, Middleton. Malachi. Amazing for such a young team. The Middleton Robotics had the highest scoring overall for the algae category, and won, they won the Rising All-Star Award. Congratulations to the Tigers. Malachi, Mr. Washington, congratulations. And then on Saturday, a school board member, Dr. Han, held her Early Childhood Literacy Fair this weekend, and that was at Belmont Elementary School. It was an incredible morning where families joined us for games, giveaways, and most importantly, free books to take home. It was a fun and well-attended event. Having a home library is so important to foster a student's love of reading. Thank you to Member Han and our other partners, Suncoast Credit Union, Literacy is Key Foundation in Mayan, and I, Dr. Han, I'm sure you'll be sharing more additional details during your comments this evening. But incredible event, and want to thank Candace Dodd over at Belmont. It was a great, great morning. So spring assessment time. It's hard to believe, of course, that we're at this point, so just, I mean, I won't get into too much detail, but I know as board members, you're out at schools, all we talk about is testing. We're in that testing season, even the schools we were at this morning trying to get their fast testing going. We have AP testing that's happening, IB testing, so our spring assessments are going strong as we conclude our school year. And I still can't believe that this is the case, especially, you know, with our seniors, with our, you're not supposed to be that happy. So, we're going to, I can't believe this is in this year, you know, it really, really flew by, and here we are, graduation time again. So graduations actually start next week. First up are our graduates at our Exceptional Student Education Centers. The following week, we begin our traditional high schools at the fairgrounds, which will run through May the 29th. So that's 36 ceremonies and over 15,600 students graduating this year. If you have a student graduating this year, please make sure you check your email for more information regarding our ceremony details, tickets, and more from your school and administrators. So of course, to view the fullest of ceremonies, you can visit our district website. So also today, we had our unique seniors, and I'll highlight these pretty quickly, but we were at Hillsborough Virtual this morning. We saw Nicole first thing in the morning, and then Simona over at Bloomingdale, Alexi Sanchez at Chamberlain, and Ryan Camper over at Alonzo. So, board members, you all are part of our unique seniors, and it was a request of the board to have the unique seniors, which we do, and that's where each high school selects just a magnificent senior. From there, we are able to go through an application process and pick four winners, and these four winners win a full two-year prepaid, so 60 credit hours, full scholarship through Florida prepaid, and these are our four winners. And it was just an amazing morning to get to Hillsborough Virtual, Bloomingdale, Chamberlain, and finally over at Alonzo. Started at 8:00 this morning, I think we finished up around, got back to the office around 2:00 o'clock. But between the teacher appreciation gifts and then going to see our unique seniors, you realize all the great things we have going in Hillsborough County, and it makes me a very, very proud superintendent. And then last night, we had our Exceptional and Education Awards. Last night, Member Rendon joined me at Chamberlain High School for the 26 Annual Excellence in Action Award Ceremony. This EIA were established for parents to recognize individuals who've made a difference in the life of their child with special needs who receives Hillsborough County Public Schools' exceptional student education services. Over the last 25 years, family members and students have been inspired to submit hundreds of nominations for administrators, teachers, support staff, transportation staff, therapists, community members, and volunteers who have touched their lives. It was truly an incredible event last night. Some more of our exceptional talents, so over at Armwood, Jennifer Glow from Armwood was selected as a finalist for the Secondary Teacher of the Year in the Avid Global Achievement Award. So this honor places Jennifer among the top four nominees in that category, an extraordinary recognition for meaningful contributions to her school, her community, and the avid mission. And then finally, just want to kind of highlight some of our hiring push. You heard Mr. Parkers talk earlier around our push and some of the vacancies we've reduced within our bus drivers. Our marketing and HR teams are hard at work recruiting the best to come work in our district. As part of their efforts, they are continuing with our More Than a Job campaign, which highlights how instrumental various positions across our district are to the success of our students. Actually, as we were driving in one of our buses, see if one's up here, these are our billboards, you can see some of our digital billboards, so we have 20 of them rotating through the county at highly traveled roads and areas. We also, we actually saw one of these today, I don't remember, between Bloomingdale and Chamberlain, I think on the interstate, but some of the wrapping around. So we partnered with Heart to showcase our campaign through exterior and interior advertisements. So 10 Heart buses will be wrapped and also feature interior advertisements encouraging passengers on the bus to visit our website to see which positions would interest them. So you start to see a lot of that now that's out there. And then finally, you know, video testimonials. We've created 30 video employee testimonials that will be shared on our district's website, on social media channels, and Nextdoor, and LinkedIn. We've also provided the marketing materials to our school sites, and they will also share on their website and in social media and newsletters to their families. I do want to give an example, I think, board members, I think, you know, Jonathan over at Hatum, everybody knows Jonathan, so he was one that we did more than a, you know, more than a teacher campaign. So I just want to take a moment and share Jonathan's video of more than a teacher.
This surpasses any kind of job I think you could have in the traditional sense of the workforce, because what we do as teachers is truly a passion. It's a passion of the heart, but it's also a passion of the mind. I consider designing lessons that are going to be engaging and really kind of captivate my audience, and in this case, that's students. And what we see the students able to do when the teacher is able to make those kinds of creative decisions in the classroom and engage every learner just makes it more of a calling. One of the most rewarding experiences I've had working with kids at Hillsborough County Schools, I don't think I could limit it to just one. There are so many chances for me to push what we're doing in the classroom outside of the classroom walls, and to me, that's the biggest thing, making learning not stop at the classroom, but exceed the classroom into the community.
So that's part, I just want to show you a clip of that. So you'll start to see our More Than a Teacher campaign, it's, you know, across our social media. So, big marketing push, you know, as we look, as we head into the summer and then into next school year to, of course, reduce those number of vacancies, making sure we have a highly qualified teacher in every classroom beginning next school year. And just some additional marketing, you can see some of our social media posts, as I mentioned, we do have a commercial spot on the Rays Friday Night Game as well around our More Than a Teacher. And that's that, and we do have just one slide on suspended agenda. We talked about Transformation Network, the MOU, that I do want to offer just a moment to Mr. Deputy Superintendent McCray to just kind of highlight some of our Transformation Network updates real quick.
So just wanted to provide an update. We have successfully completed our congressionally-funded community arts project. This was a grant that was submitted on behalf of Congresswoman Kathy Castor to the Biden Administration for $1.9 million. This award supported arts and music field trips to all 38 of our Transformation Network schools, which afforded 28,000 students the opportunity to attend the Tampa Museum of Art and/or the Stras Museum. We surveyed the students just to get a feel for their experience. 90% of students were first-time visitors to the Stras, and 79% of students who attended Tampa Museum of Arts, they were first-time visitors to that museum. So this was a great experience for our students. We are grateful and thankful for the opportunity. We want to thank Congresswoman Kathy Castor for providing the opportunity. Also, Michael Tomer, the Executive Director of Tampa Museum of Art, Greg Holland, CEO and President of Stras Center for Performing Arts, and a very special thank you to our very own Tracy Leacy, our Supervisor of Music, Laura Haby, our Supervisor of Art, and Laura Hill, General Manager of Transportation for all of their work and coordination of all of these field trips. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. And so those are my superintendent's comments. Just Madam Chair, just one additional request. The council really wants a picture, so I was wondering, yeah, so if they could make their way here, if we could do a picture real quick.
We will take yet another picture.
One more picture.
You're tall, don't stand in front of me. Short ones in the front, so they can see you.
Can you see them? You got a crack in there?
I'm trying, I'm trying to like figure out how to get in here. All these tall seniors, these are my toes, this is my tippy toes. Does that work? Thank you. Oh, nope, there's another one.
One more.
Oh, wait, are we done?
That's it? You're done?
Thank you.
Good job, man. Good job, babe.
He's great, isn't he?
But rest here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. All right, board members, we'll now move on to board member comments. Board members, just a reminder, you'll have five minutes each to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. And first, we have Member Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say also, Teacher Appreciation Week is just, as was mentioned, a teacher has such a passion, and it's just one of those positions that we need, the teachers, the children need the teachers academically, socially, emotionally, more than ever. So thank you, every teacher, for everything that you've done this year and following many, many more years of service. Thank you. Again, we actually, the Superintendent's Students Advisory Council mentioned one of the students was, took part in the Thurgood Marshall Club. I just want to say and recognize Allison Edgecombe. Three years ago, we didn't have any. Right now, she has shared that we have 72 clubs, 19 high school, 29 middle school, and 24 elementary schools, and that is really a phenomenon. Our African-American Task Force, which has had wonderful success, and Superintendent Van Ayers, you'll be very happy to hear again, that Martha Ford, Kelly Brennan, and Marie Rogers, we have reached exemplary status as in African-American history. So this district is, we're definitely involved in the study of various culture groups. Thank you for being in the Thurgood Marshall Club. I hope to, yes, I believe you're in there, yes. So PBIS, we have to move fast, so I'm trying to move fast accordingly. We initiated this after Doritah Edgecombe in 2016, Positive Behavior Incentive Support System, and I'm really, you know, I've been hammering this to go full fidelity, full district, but right now, we have about 101 schools, and I just want to recognize the progress, and I want to thank Dr. Grayes for also, and Ms. McCray, Shay McCray, for And I want to thank Dr. Gray's for also, and Ms. McCray, Shay McCray, for allowing this to grow. So 73% have completed their complete walkthrough. 71%, this is 22 out of 31 PBIS schools, have improved their score. 80% is the average score. 65% of the schools with walkthroughs have met the Hillsborough, the HRS Level 1 lagging indicator of 80%. Some of these are details, but I won't go any further. But all the folks and the wonderful teachers that have pursued the PBIS certification, gets a certificate of recognition. Thank you Stacy Wren for making them feel very special. It's so important that we find strategies to keep our students in school versus OSS or other negative learning forums. So I am very, very happy to see the progress. Also jumping to, and I'm not going to take the electric buses from the, I know Jessica Vaughn has also participated, but we don't have a, did you get a slide? Did you send Pablo a slide? So at any rate, 40 something buses are electric, and we, we are just so marveled. They're silent, and yet they're everywhere. Now, Mr. Farkas, we have, let's just, we have 20 and 20, and then we have 10 that goes all through the district?
No, 40 is it? We have 40 total.
40? Okay, 40, but it's King and all around that area?
Right, we start at King, that part too. Then we'll have at Lois, which is over by the airport, and then by South County.
So, yeah, very, very impressive. And that grant was much used. I want to thank our human trafficking committee for all their work on their panel that they had, that we had in April. Betsy Conley, Federal Bureau of Investigation, took part. Amanda Sanchez, Florida Department of Children and Families. We had Valerie Blunt Bedford, Florida Department of Children and Families. Heather Durkak, which is Gaggles, are one of our own filtering system for safety, for student safety. We had Reg Churnside from Bark. Amy Marie Granger, our vice president of advocacy, Hillsborough County PTA. Janet was present, Paving the Way Foundation. Thank you Kate Pobba. The No More Foundation. Ashley Cappucci was there, supervisor of physical ed. And Connie Rose, victims to survivors. But at any rate, we're trying to get the human trafficking and the cell phone nefarious characters making our parents aware and our students aware what, there are some grooming techniques that are very effective sadly, and the human traffickers know it and they're using it. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm done.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Han?
Thank you so much. As Superintendent Ayers mentioned, this past Saturday, we had an early childhood literacy fair at Belmont Elementary. And we could not have done that without the support of our main sponsors, Suncoast Credit Union. They, like myself, value, and the district values, early literacy. I want to thank quite a few people before we show video for their support of, of the event. Certainly the superintendent, who came out on a Saturday morning, thank you so much. I want to thank Anne Marie Courtney, Sherry Ballinger, Colleen Fossett, Tracy Brown, Kim Suchek, Rick Graves, Debbie Pepe, Laura Hobby and her team, Frankie Bulmer, Candice Dodd, Tracy Bergman, John Milburn, Chris Farkas, and the operations team, Chief Newman and his security team, Sharon O'Connor, Jean Taveras, Laura Cross for creating the video for today, and Julie Cole. I want to especially thank our community partners that participated, the Early Learning Coalition, the Children's Board, the Glazer Children's Museum, Myon, Easter Seals, the NAACP, the Lion's Eye Institute, Seniors in Service, host, our own Hillsborough Human Resources, who are getting inquiries into job opportunities, our VPK team, our Du-Language Team, Fiddler's, our Rockin', our Roll and Read, You Fly team, the kids really enjoyed that, the Early Childhood Literacy Bus, which was a huge hit. We had an amazing professional storyteller, Phineas Slaton, she was phenomenal. I could have listened to her storytelling all day long. Our Social Studies Department was out there, STEM, Kelly Education, United Way, our face team, and our art department. I want to say a big thank you to Sumner High School and King High School, they sent their ROTC students, they were wonderful volunteers throughout the morning, and their theater students who dressed up as fairy tale characters, engaging with children and enriching our storytime sessions. So thank you to everyone for making that a memorable, impactful event. Pablo, hit it. I have to concede it. And on Friday, the day before the literacy fair, I partnered with Cycle. I donated books to them, and they're going to distribute them throughout the community. So they were nice enough to come. And thank you to Mr. Farkas's team for helping me get the books off the fourth floor into the second cycle truck. There were hundreds of books, so thank you for that. And happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all the teachers who inspire and challenge and care for our students. Thank you for everything you do. You are truly appreciated. It was a wonderful morning visiting Anderson and Bloomingdale Schools to celebrate some wonderful teachers and surprise a wonderful student with a $2,500 scholarship at Bloomingdale. She has a beautiful story that we'll highlight during graduation. And while at Anderson, I enjoyed watching Ms. Covington's kindergarten class participate in a You Fly lesson. The students were so engaged, and they were very excited to show off their reading skills. And they told me that they loved, loved to read, that it was not work, that it was fun. So, and I just want to ask, just since the Bluebird buses were brought up, and we'll be launching that, and I know there was a recall on the Bluebird electric buses because of the software not detecting or warning drivers of the brake assist failure, which increased, well, it causes a potential loss of the control of the vehicle. So how is that, if at all, going to impact us, Mr. Farkas?
So we're checking our vehicle numbers versus the ones that came from. They did come from the factory that had that recall, so I can give you a better indication once we cross-reference the numbers we sent to them to see if ours are affected by that. And then they'll recall, they'll have to send them back, fix it, and then send them back to us.
Okay, so I'd appreciate an update on that, since I know we split the contract, which was not necessarily what the superintendent wanted. So I'd like to just get an update on how the Bluebird recalls are going to affect that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. You know, last week was Principal Appreciation Week, and you know, since we didn't have a board member, I just want to thank all of our principals. And thank you Superintendent Ayers, we went out to Sickles High School, and we had this amazing lunch. You know, the culinary created that, and we sat with the administration and just, you know, it's been great visiting schools. And this is Teacher Appreciation Week. I think every day of the year should be teacher appreciation, because they are really the backbone of the society. And I was trying to look for a great quote, but one of the ones I found was, "Teachers encourage minds to think, hands to create, and hearts to grow." And I really think that's so true, because our teachers do so much more than academic. They really build the person. You spend so much time at school, you know, and it really does build a lot of character. And just the other day, you know, there's, there's, there's students who majority of their life is spent at school, and maybe they don't have that stability at home, and their teachers, their bus drivers make such a, such a big impact. May is Asian American and Pacific Heritage Month, so I wanted to say, you know, let's thank you Hillsborough County Public Schools for recognizing that. On Saturday, I was with Ann Ming Trung, and I judged the Miss Asia Pacific Scholarship Pageant, which was really amazing, along with a county commissioner, as well as city council member. And I've done that, this is my second year, and that was really exciting. You know, it was just a great, great community, and I really love to be around that. So I just want to thank them and for everything that they do. And then, I just wanted, Pablo, I wanted to just highlight a couple of great events. Mr. Washington and I, we went to see the We See You, Tanya and George Kimball. They just do so many amazing things for our community, and this was such a great event. You know, as you graduate and you go to college, a lot of these students are first generation students. You forget, like, the dorm and what you need for the dorm. So what they do is they found 23 students, and they were able to make sure that that child's wish list was there. So if it was an iPad, or fridge, or, or, you know, just dormitory things that cost hundreds and hundreds of dollars. So that was such a great event. It was at Carrollwood Day School, and there were students from all over our district. And, you know, there were quite a few men of vision there, and it was just such an amazing event, all through the district, public schools mostly, but also private schools and some homeschools. So that was really amazing. So I just want to thank them. And then, also the seniors in service. You know, I've visited them quite a bit, but this last time, I was able to go to Ben Hill Middle School, and it's just so amazing. A group of men from the JCC a few years ago started going to Ben Hill and really working with these young men. And then there's a group of ladies too, that work with these young ladies, to really talk about, you know, how do you make good decisions? You know, individuals who maybe need a little bit more support. And it's such a win-win, because not only are the students benefiting, but also talking to some of the seniors, how much it's giving them purpose and meaning in their life to connect with these young people. So I think that's just amazing, and I just want to thank, that's such a great program, seniors in service. They do so much for our district, and I just want to thank them. I know they've been a partner for a very long time. And finally, graduation season is upon us, and people always ask me, are you worn out? No, I'm so excited with graduation. It's honestly, I mean, the drive there is tough, but beside, because I live on the other side of town, but it is such an exciting time to see our seniors. Whenever I'm out in my community, I'm always like, are you senior? What's your name? Because I love to see kids that I can connect with. So congratulations to all the seniors, and thank you to the parents, the teachers, the community, who's really helped each and every child. I know the other day, I was at a school, and, and every single principal is working so hard to get that child across the finish line. If it's a benchmark, or it's a GPA issue, or whatever it is, everybody's working so hard for students to get that full high school diploma. So thank you so much, and I hope everybody enjoys the next, because I guess we're not going to see you for a few weeks. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I want to emphasize the importance of teachers, Teachers Appreciation Week. Thank you for all that you do for students, because you're at the front line all the time. Pablo, you want to start? We have, we had the annual health fair at Sly Miller School. It was phenomenal. The young lady that I'm with now was very, very informative about the Miller Health. And while we was there, it was funny, because we were talking, and she was explaining stuff to me, you know, well, she said, you know, you need to do this, this is what happened in Miller Health. And then as I looked around, I said, you know, I said, you know, I might have some problem in the Miller Health. So she said, you know, Mr. Washington, you may need to go to a doctor. I said, you might be right there. But she's a very smart, she's very smart. Her name is Adora Fola Jobama, and she's a seventh grader, and also with the Nation of God, God, he was there talking about drugs and so forth. One of my former, one of my former soldiers there. And then May 1st, Lynn and I went to, we went to Franklin, you have Franklin Sly, Franklin Boys Preparatory School, and we had a great time there. That's not, that's We See You. That's another. But I can go on that one, we'll go back, we won't worry about that one, okay? So we had a great time on May the 4th. And Nadia, thank you for coming. And you can see those gifts, my wife and I, we donate each year to a student. And this year, our student was Shay Vaughn. He was a student at Jefferson High School, and he's going to FAMU, Florida A&amp;M. And we gave him gifts, and I mean, it's just amazing, because some of those kids is very underserved. I mean, they're underserved students, and we, and my wife and I, God bless us, and we try to help students as much as we can. We give as much as we can to students, because we know how hard it was when we were being reared up. This young man, I'm quite sure he's going to have a great future in life. He's a hard worker, very dedicated to, in fact, he had a 5.0 GPA, you know, so unweighted, weighted. And I was so elated about him, because it was different. From all the years that my wife and I have done things, it was different working with this young man. He was very appreciative. And the Goddess Council, I really appreciate them bringing him there, because he didn't have a ride, none of his family showed up. And you know, that's, that's kind of bad, but we made it anyway, because we gave him what he wanted, and more. We gave him extra. So, so that's all I have. And oh, principals, thank you, principals, for always doing a great job, always doing a great job. Your job is very hard, that's a job very few people have a chance to praise, praise you about, but being a, being a principal is a very difficult job. And teachers, I love you. Keep doing what you're doing, and Hillsborough County will be at the top. And thank you too, so appreciate you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to give a shout out to a few of our sports teams that are currently moving their way towards the state finals. We've got basketball team, I mean, baseball teams from Bloomingdale, Alonzo, Sickles, and Wharton. They are moving into the semifinals, and they are playing tomorrow night. So let's keep an eye on them, and as their road to Fort Myers and the state championships. Our girls' flag football teams, we've got Robinson, Alonzo, East Bay, all moving into the state semifinals this weekend for their championship games. Softball, we've got Bloomingdale, Durant, Steinbrenner, Plant, and Newsome, all moving into the regional quarterfinals. So in the next week, we could have some state champions, which are pretty exciting. I want to personally thank the Brandon Chamber for holding the educational forum. It's very informing to make sure our community knows what we're doing in education around the community, and so I want to thank them for that. I want to thank Congresswoman Laura Lee for her bringing Google to Marshall Middle School, where she gave a presentation, I mean, I'm sorry, where Google gave a full presentation on online safety for children, so that was a huge event. I also want to thank Seven Cycle, that came out to Yates Elementary School, that we were able to collect new and used goods. In order to be able to, they resell them for the nonprofits, both locally and nationally, and currently working on a, a clean water project for some of our underserved communities. I want to say a special thank you to our Special Olympics for our athletic department, for making sure we acknowledge all of our Special Olympians throughout the year and at their award ceremony. Want to give a shout out to Latinos in Action, it was a wonderful event at USF, that continues to show the highlight of so many different cultures in our community. Give a shout out to Congressman Vern Buchanan and his educational awards. We were able to provide, I'm sorry, he was able to provide awards to the principal, the head custodian, and the head food service worker, in order for anyone that was in one of our shelters in his area, that was Riverview, I'm sorry, in Reddick Elementary School, Collins K8, Riverview, Mulranin. And so they were able to be honored. Also, we were able to honor our AP and principal, as well as several teachers throughout our districts. We want to give a shout out to that. And then, before I conclude, I want to make sure that as we, as board members continue to look at the benefits to our staff and making sure that that's a priority, as we celebrate our teachers, as we celebrate our administrators, and we celebrate all of our staff members throughout, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence as we move looking at benefits for our staff. I know that when we met in the fall and talked about self-insurance, the board made it very clear that we want to look and engage into what self-insurance means and what those options are for our staff. But I do want to make sure that if we're going to bring something to this board, that it's going to be a benefit to not only the district, but to the staffs in general. And what I'm seeing is a negative impact to both the staff and the district, if it's going to be a negative balance, and we're going to have to cost more money. And if we're going to have to pay more money, then we need to make sure that we do our due diligence to make sure we have investigated all options and what self-insurance looks like. And so I expect our district to make sure that we do bring all options to the table, so this board can make an informed decision and make sure that we're doing the best for our employees. And in no way, shape, or form, if we are losing money, we are doing the best thing for our board and so, and our staff. So I think it's very important that we go out for bid, that we go out for providing an opportunity to do an overall view of what that looks like from a variety of companies, and they can create packages that will make sure that meet the satisfaction of our employees to make sure they can still use their vendors, they can still go to their doctors. But we've got to make sure that all of
got to see the electric buses in action, uh, which was very interesting, and as I mentioned to Mr. Farkas, I wish we could have had the buses when we were trying to make that decision, because seeing them in person and all the little details really helps kind of set apart the different buses. Um, and I got to ride in that little golf cart that we made into an electric bus, that was really interesting, they let me drive that, which, anyone who seen me park, anyone who seen me park, now that was a, that was a brave move, but I did just great. Um, so I want to say thank you for that. I also just want to reiterate that that was a grant, that that wasn't something that came out of general funds. I've seen some comments on some of the social media, and people are really misinformed about that, so I wish we, uh, if we can offer any clarity around that. Um, I never knew electric buses was so controversial from people. Um, but moving on, I also want to say we had a great time at the Electric Elementary, um, Electric Elementary Music Awards Banquet that we went to, they always put on a fantastic event. Dr. Han, it was nice to see you. Member Rendon? No, oh, well, we missed you, we missed you. Um, and we just had a great time, it's always a lot of fun, and to see how important it is and how much the music, uh, department really helps, you know, kind of cement all the academic pieces, that the creative and the art and the music is so important to the academic journey. Which brings me to the orchestra question, you know, this is, a lot of people came today to talk about the orchestra being removed from their school, and unfortunately, I see that happening in quite a lot of schools. Um, and I have a hard time believing, like, our students aren't interested in orchestra, um, and I'm not quite sure how we're going about getting a good idea and kind of pooling whether there's enough interest and what that looks like. So I don't know if we can send a survey out or what that looks like to parents, but I'm just seeing orchestras, um, classes across the district being slashed, and I think that's a huge disservice and a real problem, and I'm not sure if it's really, you know, applicable to students' interests. So, I don't know what we can do to gauge the temperature of that, but I'd really like to kind of dig in further to that. Um, also, it was great to go to the Chamberlain today, when we went to kind of honor all of our exceptional, not all of them, but the four kind of exceptional seniors that we're all going to honor when we talk about graduation. Um, Alexa's story was, as you mentioned, was just so moving, um, and so beautiful, to see so many of our seniors overcome such challenges and, and just really thrive, um, and just thank you to Florida Prepaid for giving them that opportunity, um, and giving out the Teacher Appreciation things, which were great, so happy Teachers Appreciation Week, and like, thank you, Member Combs, for also talking about Principals Appreciation Week, and just to all of the members who work in our school, as you mentioned, whether it's bus drivers, cafeteria workers, you know, I call everyone who works in our school educators, so thank you to all of our educators, um, and I hope you feel celebrated, not just by us at our board comments, but by our communities. You know, I hope maybe you're getting nice notes or little gifts, um, or at least a nice meal throughout, throughout the week. Um, also, I did want to ask about the KIX program, if you could send us a follow-up email on that, because I hadn't heard about that, we don't need to talk about that now, but I just wanted to say, I hadn't heard about that, and I think that kind of goes online of just getting ahead of some of these things, so any information on that, I would really appreciate. Um, and with that, uh, seeing no further business. Oh, okay, Mr. Um, Washington, want to say, welcome, Ms. Watkins, to your first meeting. You survived the first meeting. Um, well, welcome and thank you, you have big shoes to fill, as we said, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
You did good.